This meeting of the Starkville Board of Aldermen will now come to order. Please rise for the saying of the Pledge of Allegiance, after which Alderman Vaughn would like to open us in a word of prayer, and we will observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The light is my shepherd; I shall not want. He makes me lie down in green pastures. He leads me beside the still water. He restores my soul. He lead me in the path of righteousness for his name's sake. Yet though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, Father, I will fear me. Thy rod, thy staff, thy comfort. I will pass the table before me in the presence of my enemy, thou knowest my head with all. My cuffs runs over. Shuligan and his mercers shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord. Most holy, all wise, all knowing, all powerful, all seeing, all hearing, all understanding God. Again here's a few your handmade servants. Mainly the mayor of the board, Father God, have you directed us again to come before you for guidance and direction how to handle the affairs of this city? Praying now, Father God, that you will light our heart. Look to the cross where your son died for all the sins and the sickness of this world. We thank you for being that great God. We thank you because of who you are and where you are. We pray now that you please forgive us all our sins, those that are known and unknown, seen and unseen, by our transgression. Pray that you will continue to fill us with your power, your spirit, and your holiness. Most of all, we thank you for the word of God, because the word of God brings us to the realization of God. You said, "How can we heal without a preacher?" And how can he preach unless he be sanct? We thank you for the means of God, they're called by your name, preaching and teaching your word. Praying now, Father, that you will bless us to stand boldly on the decision that we got to make. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you so much. Father Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, your only begotten beloved son, born of a virgin maverick, died for the sins and the sickness of this world, died that we all can have eternal life if we accept him as our personal Savior. We thank you for that privilege that you give us. And Lord, now we thank you so much for because of who you are and where you are. Thank you again so much for controlling our destiny, not leaving us in the hand of no man. We thank you so much. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
All right, and we do have a very full room tonight. Everybody may know this, but just in case you didn't, we have overflow space across the hall in the event people standing might like an opportunity to sit, but as long as the fire marshal says it's okay for you to be in here, otherwise it's all right for everybody that chooses to stay in this room. At this time, the board, you have the written agenda before you. Are there any proposed changes to the agendas written?
I have one, Mr. Vaughn. On the revised agenda where? I want a board being here.
What was the recommendation, Alderman Vaughn?
Move it to consent agenda, please.
Move which item?
Board Business E.
Board Business E. All right, so that is recommendation by Alderman Vaughn to place item 10E as a discussion and consideration of approving the travel for Alderman Ben Carver to attend the 2015 National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington DC, March 7, 2015 through March 11, 2015, with advanced travel as requested, as presented. Alderman Vaughn's recommendation is to place that on the consent agenda.
Yes, it is.
Do I hear any objection? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection saying none? That matter's been placed on the consent agenda. Alderman Vaughn, do you have further proposed revisions?
No, sir.
Are there any further proposed revisions from the members of the board? Alderman Wynn.
I have one. I will need to add item, as an item 10L, discussion and consideration of a transportation alternative program grant application under Board Business.
You want that under Engineering?
Yes, that's fine.
All right. So the proposed... Provision from Alderman Wynn is to place an item under 11E, discussion and consideration of a transportation alternative program grant application. Alderman Wynn, is that your proposed revision?
Yes, it is.
All right. Do I hear any objection? Any objection? An objection? An objection saying none? That matter has been added to the agenda. Are there any further proposed revisions to the agenda? Alderman Carver.
I just had a question. What does this, what does this pertain to? The piece of paper we had at the table?
Well, I don't have it.
That's our grant.
Yeah, that's the grant.
That we just added.
And the city engineer will explain that to you under 11E. Further proposed revisions? Do we have any further proposed revisions? Any further proposed revisions? Saying none, a motion to approve the agenda as revised is in order. Motion has been made, Alderman Vaughn, to approve the agenda as revised. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, Alderman Wynn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. You now have before you the approval of the consent agenda. Is there any objection at this time to the consent agenda as revised? Any objection? Any objection? Any objection saying none? The consent agenda as revised has been approved. You have placed your minutes on the consent agenda, so the next matter you have before you is announcements and comments by the mayor and members of the board. I was scheduled to introduce two new firefighters tonight. Chief, my understanding is we're going to make those introductions at the first meeting in February?
I guess we did.
Okay.
That's correct.
And I have no further comments. Are there any comments from the members of the board? Any comments from the members of the board?
Is Miss Gandy here?
I believe she is. She may be in the overflow room.
She's in there.
She's here. I've seen her in the building.
She's in there.
Could you, could you give us an update on the storm cleanup, please? How we progressing or?
We are almost finished. We've removed the large part of debris. Now we're going back and we'll start trying to sweep those of what was left from the equipment area. So as far as the large pieces of debris that was curbside, we've removed all of that. But we're learning how to get down there. We started today and we'll get down there tomorrow also, and just we'll sweep through those pieces that were hard to see.
Thank you. Edward here also somewhere?
He's, he's in the other room.
That's all right.
Any further comments from the members of the board? Are there any further comments from the members of the board? Any further comments? All right. Saying none. Prior to opening the floor for citizen comment, I am going to make a couple of comments. And that is just that I believe this is going to be a particularly hard citizen comment session tonight. And I think that's one thing probably everybody in this room could agree upon. Now, I believe that the hardest things we go through in life are our greatest opportunities for growth. I believe that this is an opportunity for growth in our community tonight. No doubt, everybody is not going to agree, but how we engage one another is critical to the growth that we take away from this. So I would encourage all of you, recognizing many of your opinions, to be very, very passionate, be respectful to one another, listen to one another, and please don't respond when somebody makes some, a comment that you may like or may dislike. And let's all now hear one another. At this time, anyone wishing to make comments may do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Say good afternoon to the Honorable Mayor and Aldermen and to the citizens of Starkville. I am Pastor Joseph Stone, Jr., pastor of Second Baptist Church. Once again, we find ourselves at the proverbial rubber meeting the road in our city tonight. And once again, I call on you, our elected officials, to stand boldly and courageously to overturn the mayor's veto with no disrespect to whom someone I call as my friend, who just happened to be on two sides of the same issue. And I certainly agree with the mayor that we be respectful of that. However, I encourage those that voted to rescind it to stand courageously and boldly tonight to do the same thing. And doing so does not mean you hate or that you are against inclusiveness. However, it means that you will not be bullied by rhetoric that seeks to label our city negatively if this resolution does not pass. Starkville was a great place to live before this issue and will remain a great city after the mayor's veto is overturned. We want you to know as your constituents, those that have stood boldly to rescind the issue, you have your constituents' support. And at this time, I'm going to ask those that are in support of the rescinding of the issue, would you please stand in support of those that are willing to vote against you? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Waldrop, and I'd like to start out by saying people here in support of, I'll number sort, if Justin's supportive of the mayor's veto, please stand up. All right, thank you. So here we are again discussing the issue of equality, and I'm disgusted with five of the Aldermen sitting here: Carver, Wynn, Little, Perkins, and Vaughn. For the past several months, I have been bragging about this town. It's a progressive bubble in an all-too-often regressive state. But out of the five Aldermen, however, there is one who disappoints me the most of all, and that is you, Alderman Wynn. Ever since the passage of the plus ones, we all know you have voted every possible way, but what really strikes me are all the mixed messages that you send. Not even four months ago, you sat up there, Alderman Wynn, and sat there and said that you could not use the Bible for matters of city government. Why have you suddenly changed your vote on the plus-one insurance matter? This has nothing, so you say this has nothing to do with your religious beliefs. If you said that, well, please tell me if it didn't, why would you change your vote? This policy has originally passed costs the city no extra money. Until you say otherwise, I will assume that you changed your vote simply because you disagree with LGBT persons because of your religious beliefs and you plan on using the law to discriminate against them. This, in my opinion, is cowardice, because you responded to me when I emailed you back in September, on September 9th, I pulled a female to make sure I quoted you correctly. You said that the plus-one insurance had included so many other people besides LGBT people, and it does. Not anymore, though. And that's because of you. You seconded the motion to even bring it up according to the unofficial minutes, which we can't see because it was done in an executive session. We can't see the official, it's done in an executive session. You voted to change it to include only legally married couples, so now people like single mothers, as you said you are, and people who have to take care of a sick and dying parent can no longer put that person on the plus-one insurance, and it's because of you.
Thirty seconds.
I would like to, if I were you, I'd begin to rethink my laws. And one final thing, I think that a politician, even the local one, owes it to the representatives to be strong in their beliefs and transparent in how government operates. You, Lisa Wynn, have violated both of these principles. Not only have you voted every way on this issue, but according to the unofficial minutes, you even seconded the motion during the executive session to bring all this to a vote. Since you prefer to operate your government behind closed doors and since you seem unable to make a decision, I think the only proper thing left for you to do is resign.
Mr. Waldrop, your time is expired.
First, thank you all for your service to this city. My public service is admirable, and I admire all of you regardless of your views. Starkville is a great place to live. I've lived and worked all over the United States. I've been gay for a really long time. I've been gender nonconforming for a little bit less longer time, but still a long time. And I've been a Christian for my whole life. And as gender nonconforming and gay, living all over the United States, I have never been turned away from a church that I decided to visit or be a part of. Christians do not turn away people.
Could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Kelsey Rissman.
Thank you, Ms. Rissman.
I just moved here, recent transplant from St. Louis, Missouri. Thank you all again for your public service.
I'm Alex Carol Caldwell. I've lived here since 1972, and I've spoken about this before. It bothers me that we are supposedly living in an open society, and yet we chose some of you to go behind closed doors and rescind something that hadn't voted upon. It was legal, but I wonder how ethical it was to go behind closed doors and speak out so much against those of us who had fought to have that passed. Something to think about. I know that some of you vote according to your religion, but religion does not come into city government. That's legal, and it needs to be considered. I do want to say one good thing about the sanitation department. They don't get enough kudos. They are the ones.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell.
I'm Lee Winder. I serve a church here in town, and I know this is a, there's a lot of controversy around tonight's agenda, and I'm used to that. Come from a tradition where if you have three people in a room, you have at least six firmly held opinions. I know none of you go to churches or meetings like that, but I do all the time. There's a diversity in the beliefs of the congregation and denomination that I serve. Good, sincere people can disagree. And one of the rights I served in the military to defend was everybody's right to believe and worship as you see fit. However, the debate in my faith tradition is in a different place than you are about tonight. Let me read to you an inclusion statement that is the Episcopal Diocese of Mississippi policy, and is printed in our bulletin every Sunday. For it is a strong part of our tradition that everything the leadership teaches and discussions, discusses is open to the public. Honorable bulletin, we say we respect the dignity of all persons regardless of national origin, race, gender, age, or sexual orientation, and welcome and encourage them to fully participate in all areas of parish life. That's a theological stance. I think for the civic implications of this, I ask you three questions. And first, what on earth does someone's sexual orientation have to do with their ability to do a city job? Do people in the LGBT community have a worse criminal record? Are they lazier? Are they less competent? I had hoped that we had gotten past mischaracterizing a whole group of people based on no factual evidence. Isn't it in everyone's best interest to have as many people covered with health insurance as possible, especially when it costs the taxpayers nothing? And would you ask the development folks what a major industry will think of the action you are taking here? Will it even rise to the level of being neutral? Thank you.
Thank you, Father Winder.
Good evening to the little boy. My name is Alvin Turner. What's up? All right, I have two brothers. I'm the oldest boy. The way I live affect them, the way they live affect me. I have Epsom, Epsom. I have braces now that if I get sick, everything that's need to know is in the brace. Who to contact, all that. We need to get back to the basics. Book of James said, "A devil-minded man is unstaught," in all ways. New Testament. All right, we need to get back to basics. For some reason, a government vehicle left the ground. Nobody knew how it lived. We don't want to pay the employee, but they have to work to try to keep us safe. We, we cannot play God. All right, let's do what God lets us do and be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Further citizen comments?
Hello, my name is Judy Leonard, and I'm Ward Five. The last time I tried to speak to this board, I became very emotional. I'll try not to have that happen this evening. I had a long talk one evening with one of you. This Alderman called me and went to a lot of trouble to find my home phone number. This Alderman wanted to know if I was all right following that particular meeting. We spoke on the phone for over an hour. We then saw each other in the community and talked again. I had placed my hope in that Alderman. I had placed my trust in that Alderman. But here we are, and five of you have voted to rescind the resolution and the plus-one insurance. The five board members that have voted to rescind those items are squeezing the life out of our city. Some religious leaders have spoken on behalf of keeping the resolutions, and some have spoken against the resolutions. How can individuals profess love for all on one hand while holding a banner of hate in the other? The resolution you rescinded didn't address one group of people. It addressed a myriad of citizens, veterans. I'm a veteran. People of color. I got a color. People of different faiths. I'm kind of non-denominational, but I go to Burt Montgomery's church. And yes, it covered sexual orientation. And I'm a female, so that's my sex. By rescinding the anti-discrimination policy and also doing away with plus-one insurance, you're harming the citizens and future citizens should they choose to move here after this of Starkville. You take our tax dollars, you want our rescinded resolution citizens to shop here in Starkville, you want us to frequent local restaurants, you want us to buy gas here. Our money is good enough for you, but as individuals, we're not worthy of an anti-discrimination This past Sunday, a guest speaker at my church spoke of an incident at Jackson. This individual is an ordained Methodist pastor and was placed at a church in Jackson replacing a male pastor. The church was informed that the new pastor would be a woman, which caused quite a stir. She was replacing a white male pastor at this Methodist church. But to add insult to injury, this pastor was not only a woman, she was a black woman. She told us a white male congregant approached her at her new church and told her he didn't want her there. She was only there to destroy the church. Thank you.
Further citizen comments?
I know a lot of you here, I grew up in Starkville, so it's nice to see everybody. I told my family and community I was gay over 10 years ago. The things I heard from others when I came out were, "You're going to burn in hell. The wages of sin is death. You are a hypocrite. You are a criminal. You are wrong. You are disgusting. Your opinion doesn't matter anymore. Do you even know who God is anymore?" At the time, my 22-year-old self could barely cope. I had no one. I was left to figure it out on my own. The result of my experience was an inability to believe in myself. I often still hear in my mind, "You are wrong, you are disgusting." In order to continue, in order to live my life the way I want to, it has required me to meet the darkness, to go to that place we all fear. I had to climb past every label that had ever been placed on me, and you know what I found in that very dark place? I found a spark of light. And over time, with an intention to take responsibility and to not blame others, that light has grown very slowly. I have come to understand that being completely alone is the greatest thing that has ever happened to me. I have learned that the love in me is the same love in all of us. I have learned to see the truth of humanity despite our inability to see it in ourselves. I understand forgiveness enough to know that I will have to choose over and over and over. I trust myself enough now that I know without a doubt that I am committed to see the light in everyone despite our differences. Our labels do not define us. The spark within us does. For everyone who believes that being gay is wrong or that gay marriage is a sin, please understand that I accept that, because I do not, will not confine you to who you, to who I think you should be. I will not tell you that you are wrong, because I know how that feels, and it hurts. We all just want to be accepted and seen, and when we say you are wrong, we imply separation. Enough is enough. We all belong. I would never exclude nor deny anyone their religious freedom, so I ask for the same respect and decency. There's a young adult out there who is in the shoes I used to wear, fearing what it means to be who they are in this world. Some people aren't strong enough to know that there's nothing wrong with them despite others' words and actions. If our laws do not reflect complete acceptance of God's diverse creation, then we are knowingly destroying a part of us. And why would we break someone's heart if I'm telling you what it feels like? Right or wrong is irrelevant in this decision. There will be further separation or greater unity, and I choose unity.
Thank you, Ms. Onan.
My name is Gail Bell, and I am in Ward Four. And I just want to say a special thank you on behalf of my children for doing what you guys did. It's very brave, it's very bold, and for overturning that. And there's not enough people that can say thank you enough, and I just want to go on record to say them that, because I want for my children what I have had, and that is to stand for truth and to show love to others. But you know, love doesn't always mean saying yes, and I teach my children that a lot. It doesn't always feel good. There's always things that we want to do that are not right, and that's something you learn, and that's something you teach your children. And I just want to say thank you all. Thank you for standing up.
Thank you, Gail.
My name's Melissa Grimes. I'm from Ward Two. I know a lot of you have seen my face this week, more than you want, more than I want, and I can't believe that we're back here in this room going over this again. And I want to note a couple of things tonight. Is one, you can say this is about religion all you want, but you're public servants, and not everybody has a religion, so you've got to serve everybody. Second, this is bad for business. Do you know that I think over 300 of our Fortune 500 companies already have non-discrimination policies? They're not going to want to be associated with a town that they thinks discriminates. So you want to bring jobs into Starkville? You want to bring industry into Starkville? You can't be associated with that type of thing. Next point I'd like to make is that, guess what? Gay marriage is coming. The Supreme Court just voted to take it up. Probably by June, we're going to have a decision. Even the most conservative justices have said it's coming, so that fight is over. So you're going to have to extend benefits to gay couples anyways when they get legally married, so that fight's over with. So you're only hurting other individuals that could really use this. When you talk about the plus-one, we're talking about single mothers who need to put a child on. We're talking about adult children with ailing parents who would like to put them on. So you're hurting a lot of our citizens, and it's not costing the city a dime. And you're hurting our industry. You're hurting our reputation. We have been on national news, and for once, it wasn't for football. And, you know, we all loved being on there for football. That was great for our reputation, but guess what? We have been on CNN, we have been on MSNBC, I believe we've been on NBC, I've seen this in the Washington Times, I believe the Washington Post. We've been all over, and it's not a good thing. This is not a good look for our city. So if you want to move the city forward, if you want to bring in industries, then you guys have got to step back and take religion out of it and be public servants and do what's right for everybody and not what's right for the few. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes.
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Jones. I am a citizen of Ward Four. I just want to say, Alderman Walker, thank you for supporting LGBT community. And I really just want to say that I don't see this as only an LGBT issue. Really what this issue is, is it's about inclusion versus exclusion. So what you're basically doing is you're excluding a lot of citizens from being able to feel safe and secure in our community. And I want to, I was going to talk a lot about the industry, but Melissa just talked a lot about that. I have a family member who is the chief operating officer of one of our local factories. They are known worldwide. They are a Fortune 500 fastest-growing company in the country, and they have an inclusion policy. And I feel that as a sister of a gay person, that corporation would really find it very negative for this city to continue to exclude some of our citizens. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Youngs.
Mr. Mayor, Board, I'm Laura Walling, Ward Five. For years, members of the Starkville LGBT community have lived behind closed doors, in the closet, as it were, out of sight in order to avoid social chastisement, some in order to remain employed, and for others, out of fear of being physically harmed. Last year, through the non-discrimination resolution and the one-plus insurance option for city employees, the city of Starkville opened those doors telling LGBT, telling the LGBT community it's safe to come out. I find it ironic that the Board of Aldermen chose to rescind those two very liberating measures behind closed doors. Mississippi state law says conducting public business in full view of the citizens is a fundamental philosophy of the American constitutional form of representative government. The statute goes on to say that in its state policy, that formation and determination of public policy be conducted in open meetings. Last year, the Board of Aldermen had several open meetings in which these two items of public policy were discussed, debated, and settled. However, two weeks ago, the Board of Aldermen nullified great progress and further eroded public trust behind closed doors in an executive session. Now, the Mississippi Open Meetings Act does allow public bodies to recess into closed-door meetings, known as executive sessions, to discuss specific topics. Those topics include personnel matters, discussions of strategy or negotiation involving legal matters, security matters, investigative proceedings involving allegations of misconduct, matters of extraordinary emergency, discussions of possible sale, lease, or purchase of land, discussions and negotiations regarding relocation, expansion of businesses, and budget line items that would result in the termination of an employee. Unless I'm mistaken, I don't believe either the non-discrimination resolution or the one-plus insurance option meet these criteria for exception. The law further states that discussions in executive sessions must be limited to the reasons for the session, which have to be stated in an open meeting. I believe that means public officials cannot say they are going into a closed-door meeting for one thing and then discuss something else. Although I was not present for the Board of Aldermen meeting on January 6th, it's my understanding that there was no notice of a vote, that a vote would be taken during the executive session on these two measures. If this is the case, the Board of Aldermen may be in violation of the Mississippi Open Meetings Act. You guys have an opportunity to make this thing right. I'll call the mayor's veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walling.
My name is Richard Corey, and I'm a resident of Ward Four. I don't normally do prepared statements, but I had so many things to touch on, I made an exception. I was both surprised and disappointed to discover that on the first board meeting of the new year, the board took action to rescind its own policies regarding the equality resolution and plus-one insurance. I was even more surprised to learn how that repeal was done. To throw it in at the last minute and essentially vote on a policy issue behind closed doors is a blatant attempt to obfuscate the truth from the public at best and unethical at worst. Many of you are new and may not yet view it that way, but this is an abuse of privilege I have come to expect from Alderman Perkins, who, in my first year of office, called an executive session involving me because I referred to him once by his first name. I implore you to reconsider overriding the mayor's veto. Not only is it the right thing to do, but many legal scholars expect the Fifth Circuit's rule in favor of marriage equality to then be followed by the Supreme Court. So all of this effort will be for nothing, except then, the only people who really will be excluded are going to be those single mothers or those elderly parents who really might be able to use this policy. Repeal sends the wrong message about who we are as a community. This issue has been mentioned on national news publications and has projected us in a very poor light. If we are someone who are serious about wanting to recruit business to this area, this is not the way to do it. And lastly, counter to what was said at the last meeting where this issue was discussed, many of those who care about this issue are not transients. They are members of this community.
Thank you, Alderman Corey.
Chris Wilburn, Ward Four. I'd just come up real quick to rise in favor of the mayor's veto. And also, I just had one question as to the Aldermen from Ward One. And I was wondering what you were writing so much down. You're the only Alderman that has not paid any attention to our comments this evening and has been very fidgety. I understand, it might be notes, sir, and I'm just curious. It just looked like you didn't pay any attention to us and all of the other citizens' comments when all of the other Aldermen. And I was just curious about that, sir.
Taking notes.
Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Have a good evening, gentlemen and ladies. And again, I support you in your decision, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilburn.
Hi, my name is Troy Durigo. I'm in Alderman Perkins Ward. I'll be brief. I, I hope you all had a wonderful holiday weekend. I, by a strange coincidence, ended up on the bridge in Selma, Alabama this Sunday with thousands of other people celebrating the march, the peaceful march to secure voter rights for the people of the nation. And I was very moved by that moment and also conflicted, thinking back to my town, who is still confronted with this issue as the Board of Aldermen in my town are condoning discrimination. As, as I'm celebrating this moment of all the progress that we've made in that realm. I came home yesterday and had another fantastic day. I stood with many of you here in a park in Starkville as the Unity Park was unveiled. And it was another tremendously moving day. And citizens of our town spoke out and talked of Dr. King's dream of us all marching forward together. And I'm a white Yankee from the North. I can't say that I'm an expert on, on those issues of racial issues. But I just want to say that the meaning that I take from all of that is that we need to march together. The only way forward is all together. And I urge you all to let the mayor's veto stand, and let's all move forward together.
Thank you, Mr. Durigo.
I'm Seth Oppenheimer. I serve congregation beneath Israel. It's in Columbus, but we have many members in Starkville. I do not care how you feel about homosexuality, whether you think it is a sin or a sacrament, good or evil. In the end, it's a religious position that you are taking. To come forward and repeal, to repeal a statement of toleration and protection of rights is to say that the coercive power of the city government will stand behind those who discriminate on the grounds of religion. Make no mistake. You are taking a religious position, and you are making a public statement that says a city will not protect those who take a different position. There are many denominations, religious people, and whole religious groups who have no problem with homosexuality who will sanctify gay union. It is not the place of the city to say, "We will not protect the rights of people" when they are discriminated against on the basis of religious belief. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi Oppenheimer.
Good evening, I'm Steve Parker from Ward Four. I want to say this to you. I know Alderman Perkins went to school together. Just listened to a prayer from you. Me and Carver and I go to church together. I remember this when I talked to her. Several of you I don't know. But I want to say this. Religious issue? I imagine if I, if I would talk to you, I'd find out each and every one of you attended church and that you pray to Almighty God. I want to say this. For you to sit there and dictate religion? No, that's wrong. And I stand tonight asking each and every one of you to override the veto because that's my belief. I also respect the belief of the other side that wants you to go the other way. And they have that right as well. We all do. But for each and every one of you, I just want to say this. And I've sat here and I've listened. If you're praying to your Almighty God now, before you come in this room, you pray to your Almighty God and you ask for His guidance and His leadership. Nobody can tell you not to do that before you come in this room. You've got to do that because that's your core beliefs. To sit there and dictate religion? No. You can't tell me this issue is right or wrong from, from you as an individual. But what you can do is you can pray. And you can, you can allow your God that you serve to talk to you and tell you what you do. And then you come here and you vote your convictions based on that. Plus, of course, talking with your constituents. One other thing I want to say real quick. Next time we have a, have a meeting where you know we got people in the hall, could we not look for a bigger venue? I mean, what would be wrong? Let's move to Greensboro. Let's move, ask a church. Ninety-five percent of the time, you've got plenty of room. You probably wish people would come because it echoes too bad. But in truth, when you know you've got an issue, whether it's like this or any other form of city government, where it's going to be a full house and you know it, move the meeting. Let everybody that's out in the hall that's a voter, that has an interest in you, come in here and listen to what's being said and have a speech as well. Those folks can't get in to do that tonight. And that's, that's, that's just really not right. It's just really not right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Patty. My name is Patty Lathan. I'm a veterinarian at the Mississippi State University College of Medicine, and I teach there. I apologize, I had to write things down because I don't have a powder point that I'm used to using. So this might sound a little planned. I have the pleasure of working in a supportive environment with a great group of people. We work hard to take care of people's pets, but we're also collegial during downtimes. During these downtimes, we discuss weekend plans, vacation plans, and after-work plans. And I feel comfortable mentioning if I'm going out to eat with my girlfriend, if I'm going to a movie, or to a basketball game, partially because I work with colleagues and dogs and cats that couldn't care less about the gender of my significant other, but also because Mississippi State has a non-discrimination policy that prevents me from getting fired for being gay. I'm saddened and offended that the board has voted to rescind the same protection for the employees of Starkville. The fact that they could have to work in an environment in which they must actively hide their social activities is absurd. Having to play the pronoun game and say "they," "we," this, that, and the other, instead of saying "he" or "she," and avoiding any personal questions is embarrassing. When I moved to Starkville eight years ago, friends in other parts of the country were surprised that I moved here, given the reputation of the South in general in relation to gay rights. I told friends that Starkville's different. And friendly, people here are friendly regardless of the small detail of the gender that I love. I told them about how the citizens are so friendly that one day, when I was out walking around my neighborhood and it thundered, I mean, it was a real loud clap of thunder, a frantic stranger ran out of her house and offered me a ride home because she was afraid I was going to be caught in the middle of a thunderstorm. And I subsequently told my friends about the non-discrimination policy passed by the city last year. And now I'm potentially going to have to tell them shamefully that this progressive policy has been rescinded. People throughout this country are going to take no to the vile act, and the state's reputation will be further marred. Not only that, but labeling Starkville as a community that tolerates discrimination is going to prevent forward-thinking businesses and potentially employees from moving here. I urge the five of you that voted to rescind both the non-discrimination policy and the plus-one policy to do what's right for the reputation and the businesses of Starkville and change your vote to keep these policies in place. And for the two of you that have voted in favor of keeping the ordinances into the mayor, thank you very much for moving the city towards progress.
Thank you, Ms. Lathan. Further citizen comments?
Good evening. My name is Kristen Decker, and I live in Ward Four. I want to begin by telling my Alderman, Alderman Walker, that I appreciate your service to Ward Four and your vote against rescinding the non-discrimination resolution and plus-one insurance for city employees. I've thought long and hard about how to explain the importance of these two issues, and in doing so, I was reminded of the Board of Aldermen meeting back in September when the issues were last discussed in front of the public. I want to read a quotation from Alderman Winn at that meeting because it best summarizes my viewpoints. "We have some of the greatest city employees, and all of our families look different. Some of us don't have a family where it's mom and daddy, boy, girl, cat, and dog. I don't have a family that looks like that. I want to know that if I needed to provide coverage for my senior majoring in international business at Mississippi State, I have this option without it costing me a fortune, a fortune of great deal. If I were going to provide coverage for my son under the city's plus-one benefit, well, before we go to plus-one, let's do it as a family. It would cost me a total of $656 a month to cover me and my son. $656." But I want you to listen. Every two weeks, my pay from the city is $451.15. That brings it to a total of $902.28. That's my take-home a month. If you subtract that $656 from it, my pay would actually be $246.28. And divide that by two, it would be $123.14. Who in here that would serve in my seat would vote against this? I don't want to just think about me. What about the other single parents in our city? I don't want us to hurt a collection of people because we may not approve, appreciate, or embrace the lifestyles of others. I agree with Alderman Winn. I wholeheartedly agree. The plus-one insurance policy benefits the LGBT community, but it is bigger than that. If you vote no to this coverage, you are not only voting against the LGBT community, you are voting against employees with adult children who need affordable coverage, employees with siblings who need affordable coverage, employees with parents who need affordable coverage, employees with grandchildren who need affordable coverage, employees with spouses and partners who need affordable coverage, and more. And shockingly, providing coverage for all of these people would be no additional cost to the city. No additional cost. So to put it frankly, you are not voting against policy, you are voting against people. To again quote Alderman Winn, "I don't want us to hurt a collection of people because we may not approve, appreciate, or embrace the lifestyles of others. Who in here that would serve in my seat would vote against this?" Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Decker. Further citizen comments?
Justin Dormbusch. I'm a history grad student at Mississippi State. And I've met Ms. Winn at least once before. We had a very lovely coffee last fall. Ms. Winn stood before the community in September of last year and told us, "I can't use the Bible to address city government." She acknowledged that not all families look like hers, but the city bore no extra cost by providing plus-one health care. I suppose Ms. Winn feels absolved of the issue having repealed the non-discrimination ordinance in executive session. This happened while 60% of the town was out for the holiday and while the school was out of, while school was out of session, when most of the constituents in Starkville weren't here. Alderman Little reminded us, practically sneering, that the non-discrimination resolution had no legal teeth anyway, as if the gay community needed reminding that the state of Mississippi has no employment protections for them. This board is determined to show disrespect to a complete class of people based on their LGBT status. Discrimination has left a bitter stamp on Mississippi, one that has a unique history that makes the terms of this debate much heavier than other places in the country. We are living in the civil rights frontier where the rights and privileges afforded to LGBT people in other areas of the country have not yet taken hold. But make no mistake, that frontier is receding. The Fifth District Court of Appeals will rule any day in favor for marriage equality in Mississippi, Texas, and Louisiana. Just this last week, the Supreme Court announced that it will take the Tennessee, Ohio, and Michigan cases and settle the issue once and for all. And where will the city of Starkville be in just a few more months? After half a year of bickering, recalcitrant backsliding, and embarrassing public debate, married same-sex couples will be applying for jobs, moving into town, walking down your main street. And what will the harm be? Don't tell your neighbors how to live. By removing this non-discrimination statement, you are sending a message that some of your citizens are lesser beings than you. And no public office, no religious dispensation gives you that right. LGBT, LGBT people live here whether you like it or not. Lisa Winn understood that at least she, at least she did that in September of this year. I find no way to account for her actions.
Thank you, Mr. Dormbusch.
My name is Bob Collins. I'm eleven, Ward Five. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. As a physician, I can tell you... As a physician, I can tell you homosexuality is not a choice. Homosexuality is determined before you're born. You can believe it or not believe it, but that's the way it is. Ask anybody who is gay when they were aware that they were gay. They usually tell them pretty young. So, you're discriminating against people because they're different from you. They're not black, they're not Jewish, they're gay, but they're not gay by choice. They're gay because that's the way God made them. And if you truly love people, if you love people for being people, then how can you hate, discriminate against gays? That's it. Ward Vaughn, Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Perkins, Chris Latimer, Alderman Little, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Carter. Why did you go into executive session? You can't, you have not answered that. And I would love to hear one of you tell me why you're in executive session. Don't tell me potential litigation, because everything you're doing here is potential litigation. That's not justification, that's a cop-out. So come on, guys. Stand up and do what's right, not what your preacher told you to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. Further citizen comments?
Jason Green, Baptist Church, where you live right close to it. I do that, but over the church, and I feel like you and your family, I felt loved. And Jason, I was going to tell you that Jake came home the other night, and he was just talking about the basketball practice and what you spoke in his life, and I appreciate that, too. And just wanted to tell every one of you, we're praying for you, and I stand with Redstone and many others here, but just to, of the five that did vote, I just ask that you continue to stand on your convictions. But just to say, too, we're praying for each and every one of you, and do care for you. You know, I think of myself, when I was growing up, had a speech problems, a lot of other different things when I was growing up, and I was picked on pretty hard, if you want to say, and sometimes still looked upon, you know, growing up. You know, there's some mean people in this world, and a lot of times, mean people say mean things, and especially if they're not led by the Holy Spirit and they don't have a true relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ. So I just say to everybody in this room that I do love you, no matter who you are, where you've been, and that, and so you are loved, and I know you love my God. But I do believe that Starkville is all about family, and family is very important. Yes, I do believe in one man and one woman, and I believe that's what God has placed from the very beginning. But my thing is, is to let you know that we're praying for you and that we're here for you. And I do ask that you five will continue to stand, and we will continue to be with each and every one of you, we will. So, thank you so much, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Hi, my name is Michael Cardis. Excuse me for my phone, I've got my three little bullet points there. It's very nice to see you all, and I thank you, enjoyed listening to everybody. I moved here eight years ago. First time I was ever in Mississippi in my life was from my job interview. And I've been here eight years now, and I love it. It's a wonderful town. It's really, it's the best place I've ever lived. It's really fantastic. And like the young woman in the back of the room who mentioned her children, I have two kids, an eight-month-old and a four-year-old. And more than anything, I want him to grow up in a place of equality, where everybody's treated the same under the law. I think that'd be a really good lesson for them to see. I don't know if the money issue, if anyone's going to vote according to a money escape hatch, but I just want to offer up my services. I spent about a decade with group funding, municipalities, state, federal government, public of Panama. And if anybody thinks this whole thing would cost a lot of money, I'll give you all the time I need to work out stuff with your HR people. Finally, when I moved here eight years ago, my very best friend from up in New Jersey called me up and said, "Mississippi." I said, "Yeah, I'm really excited about it." He said, "Mississippi? Aren't they on the wrong side of history always?" And I just want to be able to show him this time, I really, really do. So, thank you. I really hope you support the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Further citizen comments?
Reverend Burt Montgomery, I teach at Mississippi State in Torah and Religion, also pastor of University Baptist Church. I'm a Baptist on the other side of the issue. And the reason I'm a Baptist on the other side of the issue is, and I'm going to speak because Christianity is very much a part of this conversation, and many of us in this room are Baptists. Our Baptist ancestors came to the United States seeking religious freedom, not from some atheist government, not from some foreign oppressive government who is against the Bible and against Scriptures, but seeking religious freedom from our brothers and sisters in Christ, who had Calvinist roots in local government, who had Lutheran roots in local government, who had Catholic roots in local government, and did not like the way Baptists interpreted the Bible regarding, we would not baptize our infants. We insisted on immersion for adults who chose to be baptized, in fact, recognizing the freedom of any individual to choose to follow Christ or not to choose to follow Christ. And that is a freedom we give everybody. And we came here seeking religious freedom for that purpose. It was a part of the, Thomas Jefferson was influenced by that, for the purpose that no one Christian group could use biblical interpretation to discriminate legally or use government force against another Christian group. And by means of that, we extend that right to anyone, regardless of their religious beliefs, even if they choose not to believe. And I'm asking our Christians in this room tonight, especially those of us from Baptist tradition, to reclaim that and to say, first of all, regardless of religious beliefs, everyone has a right to be treated as a citizen. No one biblical interpretation can rule. But as a Baptist who was shunned and forced out of my larger Southern Baptist home, because I welcome women to be called by God as pastors and as deacons, I am thankful that 20 years ago, we were not arrested and put away because of our interpretation of Scripture. I speak as Christians for Christians on the LGBT side in my church. A modest proposal for peace, let the Christians agree not to discriminate against their fellow Christians in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor McGaffery.
Jim Gafford, Ward Five. The issue here isn't religion, it's maintaining some type of cultural norm. And there's one cultural norm I think we can all agree on, regardless of our religious proclivities, which is, I don't think anyone here likes a busybody. The second issue here that's tied up in this is sex, obviously. What business is it of yours, how other people consenting adults have sex? It's not. It's not your concern. You can be concerned as a private citizen, your religious beliefs can say you should be concerned about that, but as a matter of public policy, that is nonsensical. So imagine for a moment that sex didn't exist, in a world where we don't think about sex, we don't have a way to define, we don't have a word for it. Would the plus-one insurance policy have any reason to not exist? Who is being harmed by the way other people choose their lives? No one. And anyone that thinks they should be able to tell as a matter of public policy how people should live their lives is a busybody. So at least five of you are admitted, avowed busybodies. Ironically, you did it in the classroom.
Thank you, Mr. Gaffery. Andy Coram. Further citizen comments?
My name's Kitty Hodges, I'm also a Baptist pastor. I didn't plan on speaking tonight, I don't have a written-out set of notes like everyone, but just like to say that I don't think people of the board that... Don't be intimidated because of your convictions. I think our country was founded on morals. I think if you go to church and you have convictions, but you leave them at the door and you don't mix them with politics, I think that's called hypocrisy. I think we all live by a moral code. Now, we have different moral codes. I don't think the Bible, I don't think God hates anybody, but he does speak against sin. He gives a list of seven sins in Proverbs, and homosexuality's not even in that list. However, I do think there are six major passages where God does condemn homosexuality because it says he is pro-family. In the beginning, he created Adam and Eve, and you go all throughout and you see the family structure being very important. So, vote your conviction. And by the way, I've heard a lot of stuff, my daughter is a doctor at Harvard, she studies adolescent development. There is no such thing as a homosexual gene, all the research points against that, not for that. You know, I appreciate you taking notes, Alderman Carver, that means to me that you're listening, you're paying attention, you're trying to keep up. And so I've heard a lot of emotional stuff, but the bottom line is, you vote your conviction. And it's not like you went behind closed doors, that I remember, I was at the last session, and actually, the majority voted against this, and it was vetoed, so it's not like you're changing your mind, but vote your convictions. And I just want to say that Jesus came with grace and truth. He saw the woman adultery, the woman at the well, he offered grace, but he also had truth. He said, "Sin no more." And so those of us who are believers, I don't close the door to my church to anybody, but when people have a problem, I open the Scriptures. And so for many of us who are evangelicals, the bottom line is, what does the Bible say? And that's a whole nother debate that we can have, but many of us feel like the Scripture very clearly is pro-family, one man, one woman. Thanks.
Thank you, Pastor Hodges.
Good evening, my name is Lynn Spruill, I'm Ward Three, and I want to go at this from a slightly different angle. I want to propose a cost-saving measure for the city. I think we can be fiscally responsible and save the city at least $1 to $1.2 million annually, and that equates to about five to six meals. Since equality is the watchword, I think that we should adopt an equality of treatment for all. I don't think we should discriminate based on any particular sin. We should just go ahead and discriminate on all sins. That would let all sins, and therefore all sinners, be treated equally. I'm reading from Galatians, and I'm not a biblical scholar, but I can certainly read. "Now the works of the flesh are obvious: sexual immorality, moral impurity, promiscuity, idolatry, sorcery, hatreds, strife, jealousy, outburst of anger, selfish ambitions, dissensions, factions, envy, drunkenness, carousing, anything similar, about which I tell you in advance, as I told you before, that those who practice such things will not inherit the kingdom of God." Galatians 5:19 through 21. And I didn't see a hierarchy of sins on any of this, so I don't know which ones y'all are going to choose, but I got a good idea. I would think if we adopt the policy... Sorry. If we adopt the policy not to cover sinners, since we all fall in that category, then the savings to the general fund would be enormous. Of course, it might make working for the city even less attractive than it currently is, but that hasn't seemed to be a big concern based on our lack of raises. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spruill. Further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments?
Sandra Strump, Ward Two. I wanted to say three things. I wanted to talk about the executive session and the appropriateness or not of the executive session. That Open Meetings Act also notes that while you can enter into executive session, there is nothing that requires you to enter into executive session. Transparency is important, many of y'all campaigned on that, and I think that you got into executive session by the flimsiest of excuses, and I don't think it was an appropriate topic. I hope that in the future, y'all will take the spirit of that Open Meetings Act under advisement as you make those decisions. Second, I wanted to mention, from what I've read in the paper, some of you are basing your opposition to the plus-one insurance on the idea that it will somehow cost the city. It won't. It won't. People pay their insurance premiums. The only way it will potentially cost the city is if you have enough people covered with negative insurance experience and your premiums go up. You already have enough exposure with people who do dangerous jobs, like the police department, people who are older, women, one in eight are going to get breast cancer, employees with diabetes, hypertension. Y'all have plenty of exposure. I don't think plus-one is going to impact your costs in any way. So there's no reason to vote to override the mayor's veto based on cost related to plus-one. And as far as the equality resolution, I wanted to read something from our baptismal vows. I go to the Episcopal Church, I was very proud of my priest for sticking out tonight. And in our baptismal vows, we're asked if we will strive for justice and peace among all people and respect the dignity of every human being. And that's all your equality resolution does. And if y'all had any type of baptismal vow that looks toward respecting individuals, looks toward respecting human dignity, I hope you'll honor those vows tonight and not override the mayor's veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Strump. Further citizen comments?
Good evening, I was not planning on speaking tonight. My name's Cassie LaPillow, and I have an 18-month-old. I want her to grow up in a place where equality is something that is prioritized, and I don't know if I can do it here. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaPillow. Further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments?
My name's David Hoffman, I'm in Ward One. I just wanted to make a brief logical connection that hasn't been made yet by any of the deposition I've been in over in the other room, the overflow. This town, the heart of this town is Mississippi State University, one of the things that we struggle with the most, a faculty member of the day. Anybody who's over there knows that one of the things we struggle with is retention of good faculty. One of the reasons that most people leave here, I've been here seven years now, I've seen a number of amazing scholars leave this town precisely because of the sort of circus thing that's going on in this board right now. They see a place that's not inclusive, they see a place that's exclusive, they see a place that's based in discrimination, and they think it's an embarrassment. So, they don't want to choose to raise their families here, they don't want to choose to continue to live here, they seek employment elsewhere, in a university town where those things are guaranteed. So I just want y'all to think beyond economics, just in terms of big industry, I want you to think about Mississippi State and making Mississippi State an even better university than it already is. It already is great. We can make it even better if we can retain faculty. And one of the things that drives faculty out of this town, I've seen it, I've talked to friends, I've lost 20, 30 good friends, great families have left this town in the six years I've been here, precisely because of this sort of behavior, because it's embarrassing. They come here to try and think that Mississippi won't live up to its reputation. What happens? It lives up to its reputation, and y'all are making that happen. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Further citizen comments? Do we have any further citizen comments?
Here I have one minute left. I just want to say... I have. My daughter, I told her how I spoke the last time, and she said, "Good for you, Mom." That's my gay daughter. My daughter is going to get married in March to her longtime partner, because she lives in North Carolina, in Mississippi.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. Further citizen comments?
Good evening, my name is Alisa Warwick. I have lived in Starkville for, well, since 2008, August 1st, 2008. I moved to Starkville to attend our fine Mississippi State University. And I'll never forget the look on my mother's face when I told her, with pride, I was moving to Mississippi. And she looked at me with a quizzical look, and she said, "Didn't you swear you'd never live in Mississippi?" And I said, "You're right, Mom, I am a hypocrite." But you know what? I fell in love with Mississippi State University. The two years, whenever I made that statement that I would never, ever live in Mississippi, I was working at a civil rights site in Arkansas, in Little Rock, where nine of the bravest people I've ever had the privilege to know made history as teenagers by walking into Central High School in Little Rock. And for two years, I got the privilege of telling this story. And it was mostly to school kids, as you might imagine, it was kids coming in for a field trip. And they, you know, didn't really wrap their heads around it. They would look at these famous pictures of the 16-year-old Elizabeth Edford walking down the street... all by herself with a white mob screaming, "Who knows what kinds of ugly things at her?" And they were so confused. They couldn't understand how someone who was different was being treated with such ugly hate. And there's a story behind every photograph. Those two women who are mostly at the center came to an agreement. They met, they had a reconciliation. But they didn't understand, the kids didn't understand. It's 50 years removed from 1957, more than 50 years now. And I can't imagine that in 50 years, if we're to go down this path of discrimination and overturn the mayor's veto of our equality resolution, how confused children will be in 50 years. Why did they not want equality? Why did they not want people to be treated fairly when the Constitution clearly states equality under the law? Why not? We have a hard decision before us, for all of you. And I would suggest that you may stand upon your convictions of overturning the veto, but you also have the weight of history upon you. Make the right decision. Please uphold the veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Warwick.
My name is Dr. Amanda Gedinger. I am a veterinarian here in Starkville. And I've been here for eight years. And the question was posed to me a couple weeks ago. It was just in a private discussion about why the world is the way it is. Why are we seeing more violence? Why are we seeing just so much more evil in the world? And the biggest problem is because leaders of today have not stood on their moral convictions. Yes, those moral convictions may come from a religious belief. It may come from the Bible, as mine do, as mine do. But if we do not stand for what we believe, then what are we standing for? This nation is falling apart. And I know every single one of you have seen it. We see what's happened in Missouri Ferguson, or Ferguson, Missouri. We've seen what's happened in Bradenton, Florida, and Washington, DC. I can go on and on with all the different cities. And it's because people are not willing to stand on what they believe. And as a Christian, I do believe in the marriage between a man and a woman. It's what I believe, and I stand on that. And I want to just encourage you, as the Board of Aldermen, to stand on your convictions. And the reason we have the problems in this world is because first and foremost is the breakdown of the family. And if Satan can get his hands into the family and break them down, and that includes adulterers, that includes people who fornicate, it includes all those things. If we cannot see that these are sins, and I agree with what one of the ladies said, is that if we are going to put the homosexuals on trial for this, then we should as well, the adulterers and the fornicators and all those that are sin, that have sinned before us. But I also want to say that Jesus Christ is Lord, and he loves each and every one of us, but he hates the sin. But we need to be able to, you know, live and be on our convictions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gedinger. Further citizen comments? Do we have any further citizen comments?
I'm one of a handful of people that didn't plan to speak today, tonight. My name is Lindsay Wilson. I don't know what ward I'm in, honestly. Sorry. Off of North Montgomery? Whichever one of you, okay? Right, five? Hi. Okay. I really just wanted to speak for my aunt. She passed away two years ago about this time. She was raised in Lewisville, Mississippi, which is where I was raised. And in college, she attended Mississippi State. Halfway through her education, she came out to the family. And because of social stigma and also for how the church was interpreting things, my grandmother freaked out and made her move to the north with my mother in DC, where we were living at the time. I was not born yet. So she stayed in the north and rarely visited back south. And I find it crushing as I've come of age and realize what's transpired and how she was not fully accepted by certain members of the family because of the social stigma and things like that carried here in the south, that a part of our family was torn apart. And what I wanted to speak to tonight is to speak to Edwina McNeil, was her name, and to let her know that she's welcome here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Further citizen comments? Do we have any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments? Seeing none, we'll...
I just want to amend my comment here. I want to make sure that everybody knows that I support the mayor's veto. I didn't know if I made that clear.
All right. We'll now move to public appearances. We have two public appearances scheduled tonight. First public appearance is by Joel Downey of Habitat for Humanity. Mr. Downey, you will have 10 minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you. I'm Joel Downey with Habitat for Humanity, and I'm glad you all came tonight to hear me speak. I will be brief, but Aldermen, if you have any questions, I'd like to take this opportunity for you to ask them so I can answer them. First and foremost, we're a Christian ministry. We believe that by being Christians, we're compelled to put God's love into action. And the way that we do that is through helping people who are in need of housing. But there are also people who are willing to work to make a better life for themselves. And as Christ said in Matthew 25, "What you do to the least of these brothers of mine, you also earn to me." The concept of partnership housing began in Americas, Georgia, and we're one of 1,400 affiliates of Habitat International. And since our conception in 1986, we have done 56 houses and 220 people have been served by us. And I'd just like to say, I'm relatively new to Starkville and had this position for a year and a half. For the Starkville affiliate to have been operating for almost 30 years is a wonderful thing. Our mission is families have to have a need for better housing. And then, just like middle and upper-class economic groups, housing is the single greatest expense a family is going to have, and it's also the primary source of assets. So we believe that giving that opportunity to low-income folks puts them on the same level with middle and upper economic groups. And finally, volunteering builds community understanding and awareness and the support for low-income families. The beauty of the Habitat method is how directly it meets the needs for low-income families. We raise money for materials. All the donated dollars go towards the construction of the Habitat house. We do not use any donated money for administrative costs, for salary, or anything like that. We use volunteer labor and donate materials, and then the family repays the mortgage on a 20-year, no-interest loan. Okay, on our applicant requirements, all of our applicants have to be low-income, but they also have to be able to repay a loan. So they have to make under $31,000 for a family of four. But our house payments run about $300 in principal payments and $200 in escrow. So to get a $500 payment without making it a unrealistic burden on the family, we're looking for families who make about 21, $20,000 a year. So we're really looking for the $20,000 to $30,000 income range. And we don't necessarily pick the neediest family, but we pick the family that impresses us the most, that they're going to make a good opportunity out of this. And all of our partners have to be from Octoberhawk County for at least a year. All partners must take classes to improve themselves at Emerson Family School. And then I think most people are familiar with the $300 of sweat equity. That's the hours that the person has to put in on the job site, helping to build their own house. And we do follow the same rules as a, we are a mortgage lender, so we follow the same rules with credit checks and applications and documentation of income and that kind of thing. We have a 21-member board. It's rather large. And most of the work that's done by that board is done through committees. In our office, we have two employees, myself and an office manager. We're both part-time. At the construction site, we have a construction manager, licensed tradesman for electricians and HVAC and things like that. And then our volunteer team leaders, and I'll talk more about volunteers in just a second. On our funding, you'll see, well, none of those came out. Several of them didn't come out. I'm sorry about that. The orange in the bottom right-hand corner is our mortgages that are repaid. And that's about $70,000 a year that comes in. And then the upper one is donations from churches, about $60,000. And then we have our golf class, the resale store, Kappa Sigma Fraternity from MSU. All of that comes up to a $250,000 budget, annual budget. And I'm interested to see what the next slide's going to look like. Oops. Okay. As you can see, construction is $180,000. So it's almost three-quarters of our total budget. And then we have salary and rent utilities and that kind of thing. And that's what comes out of that $70,000 that we get for, from the mortgage repayments. As part of being a Habitat affiliate, we get donations from manufacturers. Whirlpool Appliances gives us a stove and refrigerator for every house. And then we have some of the other ones named there. Of our volunteers, we will have over 1,000 volunteers every year. And most of those are MSU students. We have also members of communities, church groups, and that kind of thing that'll come out. But we also have about a dozen guys who are there pretty much every shift. And these folks are sort of semi-skilled, and they actually guide the students. And most of them are also retired educators. So we really see them putting it into effect that they're taking, you know, used to work with kids, now they're teaching them how to build. And the volunteers really get a lot out of it, too, because we see people who have never done anything productive in their life, you know, and they've actually put shingles on a roof or something like that. It builds a lot of self-esteem. Our houses, we're very proud of the product that we're producing. We can't say that we're actually giving somebody an asset unless their house is going to hold up. We have two-by-six exterior wall construction trusses, hardy board siding and stained concrete floors. That's not only a pretty cost-effective way to do it, but it makes a better house. All of our houses meet all local codes. They're inspected either by city code officers or by private inspectors. The last house we built in the city on Fady Street, we had Mr. St. John, who's the city inspector, the building inspector, came, and he seemed to be pleased with what he saw. We did not have any re-inspections. We passed everything on the first time. It takes us about four months to build a house. Okay, we'll talk about homeownership, why we emphasize homeownership. As I said, housing's the greatest expense for a family, and it's also the greatest asset for a family. But it's also the number-one indicator of how well a community is doing. The greater the homeownership rate in a community, the better the community is, the healthier the community is. So homeowners have things like lower divorce rates, less substance abuse, that kind of thing. But in the majority of neighborhoods that have homeowners, or make up the majority, you have higher property values, lower crime rate, and that kind of thing. We're talking about housing in Starkville right now. According to the 2010 census, roughly one-third, I'm sorry, let's not have it out, but it's 32.6% of Starkville residents live below the poverty line. And the state of Mississippi has a 24% poverty rate, and the United States has a 14% poverty rate. So that's pretty significant, that Starkville has a good number of poverty, people in poverty. But if you look at the price of the house, here, it's not going to show it again. Let's see what we've got. Okay. Starkville's housing price is $150,000. It's the average price. Octoberhawk County is $130,000. And then the state is $100,000. You compare that to the homeownership rate, again, I don't have it, but the state has 70% homeownership rate. Octoberhawk County has 52%. And Starkville has a 41%. So what that shows you is that there's an inverse relationship between the house cost and then the rate of homeownership. And that just, it sort of goes to show how hard it is for lower-income people to participate in homeownership, which is what will bring them out of poverty. So Starkville Habitat in the city, since 1986, we've done 56 houses. 32 have been in the city. And we like working in the city because it gives our people better opportunities, better employment opportunities, that kind of thing. We have, this has been at Drive, we had a mosquito-infested lot, and then we were able to put two people paying taxes there. Our challenges in the city is real estate prices are very high. All the cheap lots are gone. And then we have high infrastructure costs working in the city. How can the city of Starkville and Habitat work together? Well, like these Rotarians here, we're asking, the Rotarians have been providing us spiritual and financial and volunteer support for quite a while. So for 30 years, basically, the community has been behind Starkville Habitat. What we want is for the Board of Aldermen and the city to take our mission as your mission to help those one-third of the citizens in the poverty level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Downey. All right. Our second and final public appearance this evening will be by Dr. Ravi Perry, speaking on the equality resolution.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. It's always an honor to speak in front of public service, because I teach about y'all every day. So it's great to be here. Those of you who don't know me, I'm Ravi Perry. I'm an assistant professor of political science and public policy here at Mississippi State. I'm also vice president of the National Association for Ethnic Studies, and I'm on the Board of Directors of the ACLU of Mississippi. The prophet Isaiah asked a question. He asked the question is, "Is this what you call a fast? Is this what you call an acceptable day unto the Lord?" And he goes on, and he says, "Is this not the kind of fasting that I have chosen, to loose the chains of injustice and to untie the cords of the yoke, to set the oppressed free and to break every yoke? Is it not to share your food with the hungry and to provide the poor wanderer with shelter when you see the naked, to clothe them and to not turn away from your own flesh and blood?" I'm a private citizen. I come before you today representing no organization to address you, obviously, as you know, on the equality resolution and your actions thereof. And for me, I chose to begin with Isaiah, because one of the beauties of Isaiah, and this is from, if you wanted to know the exact reference, from chapter 58, verse 5 through 7, is that this is a direct relationship you can draw between Isaiah, the prophet of the Old Testament, and Jesus, whose motto, of course, Christians, right, are allegedly to be following. Isaiah manages one thing for us here, to focus not on our material things, to focus not on our worldly possessions, to focus not on our corrective matters of our daily misfortune, or our contrived matters, rather. But for Isaiah, he asks that we must ask ourselves, is our offering, is our relationship, is our commitment, is our standing in this city, in this nation, is our place in this world, is it of selfishness, is it of wickedness, or are we keeping ye judgment and doing justice? For Isaiah blatantly reminds that we must, in fact, do just that. We must do justice. Because he says in chapter 56, verse 1, "Keep ye judgment and do justice." What does it mean, though, to do justice? Well, clearly here, justice, right, is an action. Justice requires us to do something, to move, to do, to act. And our reward, of course, is promise, right, for those of us who are Christians to be great in heaven if we, in fact, do this thing called justice. "For blessed is the man that doeth this," says Isaiah in verse 2. And later in chapter 61, he tells, he gives an answer to the questions that he asked just a few chapters prior about this whole fasting thing. I wanted to connect for the effort that we make every day, presumably acceptable to the Lord, right? And recall that it was in chapter 58, that I just said earlier, that Isaiah asked us to do something. He asked us to look in the mirror and think about our fast, to think about our commitment, to think about ourselves, to think about our relationship with each other, and ponder just for a moment, ponder, is not our fast to let the oppressed go free? Is not our purpose of our fast not to feed the hungry or to clothe the naked? Yes, I believe that it is, that that's the purpose of our fast, that this is why we're here today, to discuss, of course, what has happened here in this august body. And that... here today, to discuss, of course, what has happened here in this august body, and that is fasting for justice, for all of humanity. For the fast, right, is simple, it means to live. The fast means to be on one accord with God. The fast means to be on one accord with God and our fellow human beings. And by fasting, we can do justice. For Isaiah, fasting is not merely controlling one's diet for spiritual purposes, no, that's not just it. Fasting, rather, is also emblematic of one's entire purpose in life, and it is on this evidentiary basis upon which our relationship with God actually rests. Is it not that the fast that I have chosen, to loose the bands of the wickedness, to undo the heavy burdens, and to let the oppressed go free? He asks. For Christians, as many of you I know are, presumably you've chosen this fast. As followers of God's only Son, presumably you've chosen this path, the path to fast for the purposes of liberating ourselves and others from the yokes of oppression. Moses did it, Zechariah did it as well. Moses did it, of course, in terms of not oppressing foreigners. Zechariah did it, of course, in reminding us not to oppress widows, or orphans, or poor people. But more than that, our daily responsibility for those of us who are Christians, I believe all of you there are, we should be fasting each and every day. For by fasting, we set others and ourselves free. By fasting, we do justice. And here comes the beauty of Isaiah. For in chapter sixty-one, Isaiah says, the Spirit of the Lord God is upon me, because the Lord hath anointed me to preach good tidings unto the meek. He hath sent me to bind up the broken-hearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and the opening of prisons to them that are bound, to do justice. Justice herein is a commandment. The Lord God has anointed Isaiah to share with us how to free each other and to remove the shackles of oppression. And, of course, it was none other than Jesus, and here's the connection for you, who seven-hundred years after Isaiah, was tempted by the devil in the wilderness for forty days, and he returned to Galilee and to go to Nazareth, his hometown, where he later admits that he nor any prophet is accepted. He shares on the Sabbath in the synagogue this passage from Jesus' actual mouth. The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he hath anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He hath sent me to heal the broken-hearted, to preach deliverance to the captives, and the recovering of sight to the blind, and to set liberty to all they who are bruised. Jesus then handed the book of Isaiah to the minister there in his hometown of Nazareth, at the synagogue, and he sat down, and then he said, this day is the scripture fulfilled in your ears. Jesus, by going home to Nazareth and to his home church, and getting up to read from Isaiah, to then proclaim that the words of the prophet from seven-hundred years prior was fulfilled in that very moment with his attendance at that church on that Sabbath, here today, we know what that means to fast, then, at least we should know. Because we know what it then means to do justice. For Jesus himself, as he said it, this is not an interpretation, these are from his own, his own mouth, in fulfilling the prophet Isaiah's vision places justice, liberty, and freedom at the core of the Christian faith. Often people ask me, how can I be a Christian as an intellectual, as a professor, who clearly knows that there's so many other options for you to believe in? And my answer to them is simple, that I serve a God who has places me and my people's experiences at the core of his very existence, and the purpose for being sent to earth was to save us. Who wouldn't serve a God like that? A God whose son, in coming down to my level, and I'd only believed it to be a priority to speak to the needs of those left out like me, but also insisted upon letting free, breaking the yokes of oppression from those who have been left in. Some of us who have been left in prison, left in relationships of despair, others have been left in the closet, some have been left in bondage of distance, or left in a world where all the walls seem to be caving in every day. But then my God, my Jesus, came here to speak for those who have been left out, left out of the words of we, the people, and the Constitution, those who have been left out of the group of people truly eligible to pursue the words of the Declaration of Independence, or the Pledge of Allegiance you all just read, that says, justice for all, life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness for all, in the Declaration. This experience that we're here today allows us to remember that we have an example in Isaiah to do justice. And Jesus was able to exemplify Isaiah's effort to do justice himself by going home to his own home synagogue and indicating such. Thus, for us today, by voting to uphold equality for all, by voting to help to heal the sick, by extending health coverage to all, by exercising the most precious gift to do justice, we can actually help to ensure that our city and our nation, who strives allegedly for equal justice under the law, that that can effectively happen here in So on today, I want to lift up your original decision to honor the dignity of all of God's creation here in Starkville. I want to remind us of this original achievement that you made in the past that does, in fact, mirror the doing justice that Jesus and Isaiah commands, and that Jesus said himself he was called to do, and that as followers of Jesus, those of us who are, are called to do.
Your time's expired.
And that is our mission for today. Thank you very much.
All right, next you have before you the first public hearing on proposed changes to the Park and Recreation Ordinance, two thousand eight-five, for the city of Starkville. I'm going to call Mr. Scrivener up front, he's going to deliver a report on the financial status of the parks. And, of course, previously you received information that the current financial status of parks is troubled, and there is a possibility, a probability, that additional city revenues will be needed for parks this year. Upon having that discussion with Mr. Scrivener, the board elected to have public hearings on changing the structure of the Parks Commission. It would be changing it from an autonomous body to an advisory body that reports to the board. And the way this ordinance change is drafted, the commission would remain intact as an advisory body, which would advise the board on parks matters, but financial matters, with the exception of matters related to the two percent tax, until July first of this year, when the two percent tax is set to be renewed, would still remain matters that the Parks Commission would have to approve due to how that legislation that enables the two percent tax is drawn. So I'm gonna ask Mr. Scrivener to give a brief summary of the financial information that he has previously presented, and then we'll hear any board comments and, of course, comments from the public. Mr. Scrivener.
Mayor, Board, again, we appreciate the opportunity to put this together for you. My audit staff and myself looked back over the last five years of the parks operation to try to identify the source of some of the financial strain that's been on that department or that mission. Interestingly enough, if you go back to fiscal year two thousand ten, you'll see that the total revenue from the parks in two thousand ten was one million, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand. Of that amount, nine hundred and nine thousand dollars approximately was transferred from the city of Starkville. If you flash ahead five years to two thousand fourteen, you'll see that the revenue is a million, seventy-two thousand, of which nine hundred and forty thousand dollars of that was transferred from the city of Starkville. So the revenue is fifty thousand dollars less than it was five years ago, but it's pretty consistent. Some of those years, two of those years, were relatively high years because of single, one-time donations into the park commission structure. That allowed the park commission, at that time, to not show such large deficits as what has shown up in the last couple of years. When you look at the fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget, you'll see that the park commission is budgeted at an eighty-thousand-dollar loss. Mr. Peters and I have gone over that budget, and I do think that is a very realistic budget. Now, that does take into consideration the repayment of the sixty-thousand-dollar loan, as well as paying some of the old utility bills. When you look at the expenditure side over the last five years, total expenditures in fiscal year two thousand ten was a million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand. Expenditures in fiscal year two thousand fourteen was about fifty thousand dollars less, at a million, sixty-seven thousand. Utilities are relatively consistent, utilities were up twenty-two thousand dollars from two thousand and ten, and personnel's up about forty thousand dollars. So it's not necessarily a spending problem as much as it is a revenue source problem, and therein lies some of the conflict that we see as auditors, that exists between, you know, the park commission being independent and not knowing necessarily what you know as a city and having to ultimately end up paying the bills at the end of the year. So we do not see the park commission this year, short of coming up with a donation, being able to function through the end of the fiscal year without input from the city or a major contribution donation.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Alderman Carter.
As far as utilities expense, is that mainly from electricity, or are there other things that are contributing to the increase in the last five years?
It's predominantly electricity. Now, you have expanded some of your park systems in the last five years, as far as additional utility functions, but most of it's just the increase, the rate increases on an annual basis.
So basically, we're falling short a hundred a year?
Yeah, pretty much.
And I know that Coca-Cola, the Clark beverage group, and then Travis Outlaw, you know, kind of floated us through a couple of years, and the Board of Aldermen have contributed this year. I'm gonna say a couple of things, also, I like that graph, I don't know if you brought it tonight.
I did not, I was, I asked if I needed to bring that in a PowerPoint, I apologize, I was told I did not.
I thought you've done a good job so far with everything we've asked you to do. I know you said duplication of things, such as maybe your services and then the parks, is there any other duplication or anything we can look at?
We continue to look at that, Mr. Peters and I have discussed that, and I think that's something that we can really bring a concrete number, but there are many duplication of services. The audit fee's one of them, and I openly told you that, that that's a fee that you audit, but it's, it would be insignificant inside the city audit. And so, but since you have to do a standalone audit on that, it costs an extra six thousand dollars a year to do that. You also have an external accountant that generates the financial statements for the park commission. That's about nine hundred to nine hundred and fifty dollars a month that you would be able to absorb inside of the city function. Handling some of the payable processing and some other items like that, landscaping, the ability to use more fluid city crews over there, we feel like, again, just looking at the numbers, that we can come very close to the shortfall by merging the two operations.
Further questions?
Anybody got any questions for him? I've got a couple of comments, I can make them later or make them now.
Go ahead.
The only, you know, the way I feel about this and breaking it down as simply as I can is saying, I would imagine if I borrowed one of y'all's checkbooks in here, and then when I ran out of money, I asked for more, kind of like a child may do, or a teenager or something like that, but that's how I've enjoyed the way the parks has been set up, but I think it's come to a point where if we know that we're gonna have recurring expenses that are gonna be outside of our means, you know, as a Board of Aldermen, you know, we're ultimately fiscally responsible for it. And so I would like to see the parks fall, I personally would like to see parks fall back under the board because we are responsible for it. I think it's come to that time, we've had some generous donations, I thank Harold Clark and the Clark family, I thank Travis Outlaw for getting us the last couple of years, I thank the board for their actions this last year. But it's gotten to a point where if it's a simple fact that there's not enough money to cover everything we need to pay for, then I would like for the board, if we're gonna be fiscally responsible for it, I want to be having a little more authority to vote on that. So I think y'all know where I stand on that. Are you at the floor?
Further questions, your comments from the members of the board?
Alderman Walker. So, Mr. Scrivener, you're saying in your audit, this is outside of the realm of the two percent money, is that correct?
That's correct.
With the two percent money alone, since it can't be used for operations, it really has no bearing on helping make the park system in its current state being financially solvent, is that correct?
That's correct.
I think what you identified is there may be some, what call it, low-hanging fruit, where there may be some redundancies and the things that help get us there. I, for one, agree that we had mentioned before, I believe, it was Alderman Little mentioned, we were looking at the utilities numbers, and it was sort of up and down, and the question was why down, and it may be that there might be some, there might be some reasons for that, maybe some cost-saving measures, but it may be that a number of lights and things just aren't functioning like they need to. So a little ground-truthing on some of that to find out where, how those numbers really are working, I think's important. I think we've, the audit puts us in a position where, yes, as a standalone entity, it looks like that the park system is in trouble. My question, and this is the question for the board, is, how's it gonna get better if we take it over? How are we going, how are we going to make the park system function and better? We've just spent seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a ditch that's not finished, and may not be finished, and if it goes to court, it might end up costing us a million dollars. So as we move forward, if we're gonna fix the park, we have to have a plan, and it has to be a plan of not just saying, by golly, we're gonna take the low-hanging fruit and everything at the parks are gonna be great. This is a serious matter, it requires serious thought, serious discussion for how we're going to make our park system one of the envies of the state. We've come a long way since Parker and Ben were playing soccer out there in a field, and so we've made tremendous strides, we made tremendous strides, but we're not there yet. And I do believe that we might have something to say to improve the parks, but it's not gonna be something that just by us taking over is going to be the magic bullet that makes all the problems at the parks go away. I think there's a number of issues that have to be addressed there, and I don't know what the answers are. I think we're gonna have to talk to people that can help consult with us to figure out how do we look at, is it restructuring, is it a re-management? How do we look at the operational cost of managing a park system and not just recreation, active recreation, to be a fundamental part of how we make the park system in Starkville better? And since I've misplaced the graph that you've seen, can I have yours, so as part of the public record?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that both of them, so now this is part of the public record?
Yes.
Yeah, if you want me to.
Is there any way, Mayor, I ask, if we can get that scanned or something like that and put it into our minutes, or have a way to post it on the website sometime next week?
Yeah, we can post it independently on the website, so it's clear where it is, and since it's been included with Redford, it will be a part of the minutes of the meeting as well.
Well, I was just gonna say that, I think that'd be good, because this was done by a third-party, independent party, and I know the media's covered this story for a while and things like that, and you wanna know what's going on down there, but this is probably, this piece of information helped me, and it's gonna help anybody that looks at it understand why things are the way they are. I don't think there's been any mismanagement, I know there's not been any mismanagement of funds or anything like that, but it is, you know, a situation we've gotta fix, and the question that Alderman Walker, how would it get better? Can't answer that, but it won't, it won't change if it hadn't changed in the last three, four, or five years. I think it's an opportunity that the board can use to, I said this last time, to each and every one of you, I think that, you know, I think you can, I think, I pretty much know you'll look back in five or six years, and you will be the envy of the state. I think that when these tournaments start rolling in here, and we become the go-to place for, you know, all sorts of recreational activities, we're on the verge, and I have full faith in us as a board and the mayor that we can come back, and five years later we'll look, we'll look back, and this will be a wise decision.
Alderman, where?
I noticed that two of our Park and Recreation Commissioners there, Ms. Dorothy Isaac and Ms. Betty Robinson, thank you for your service to Park and Recreation. If there are others in here.
Herman's pointing to somebody.
Okay, there's a, I didn't know her name. Will you stay in and tell us your name? Thank you so much for your service.
Further questions or comments from the members of the board? Any further questions or comments from the members of the board? All right, seeing none, I'll open the floor to citizen comments. At this time, anyone wishing to make comments on the board's proposed changes to the Parks Ordinance, please do so by coming forward, introducing yourself, and you'll be And you'll be recognized to speak for a maximum of three minutes.
Sandra Sisdrunk, Ward 2. I appreciate everything that you said, Alderman Walker, because it was pretty much what I wanted to say. And I'm gonna say that in chaos, there's opportunity. And I think this is a real opportunity for y'all to take a look at the park system and engage a lot of people who know way more than me or any of you about what the parks are and need to be and plan going forward. Just bringing them back into the city will help with some of the problems, some of the problems. But it won't address all the problems. To say that landscaping can be absorbed into city services and make that magical, that expense magically go away implies that sanitation department or someone in their department can absorb that, that there's that much capacity. And there's simply not. I don't think Ms. Gandy would say she has that much capacity there. So I'd love for y'all to put together, not just swing that pendulum from Parks Commission to the Board and let it drop there. I'd love for y'all to put together some sort of group. Alderman Walker has a great deal of experience here. You have soccer groups, baseball groups, basketball associations, tennis. I mean, there are people that deal with passive uses of parks. There are people who understand other things that parks could need. I'd love for y'all to see some sort of group put together. Take these months that you have before the 2% rule changes, apparently. And I'm assuming that the Mayor thinks it's going to change to allow it to be brought back in, to allow it to be brought back into the city. And put together a plan, a good plan for going forward. Take this opportunity and don't make it a, don't make a quick decision. Take the opportunity and engage your community.
I was gonna comment on that. I've agreed with that too. I think that this being a unit that has so many moving parts, it's gonna have to be. I know that this Board also wants to keep the current Commissioners. And that's just to, I mean, engage them. And, you know, they've got the hands-on knowledge of how this functions. And so, I mean, it's gonna have to be some kind of task force or some kind of committee, you know, to actually get us up to par, get us up to speed with all of the moving parts. Thank you.
Agreed, good evening, day one. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna have to get it together. All right, you don't want the people to lose trust in the people that they're letting. We have two lawyers on the Board. Then we need to get it together. We don't need to like wind up in Aberdeen because then we are messed up. Pray about the problem, try to fix it. The people are losing trust.
Thank you, Mr. Dern. Further citizen comments?
I would just, to the Board, to the Mayor, and to all our citizens that are here tonight, I would just like to thank you for the comments that you just made. And to Jason, thank you very much. And also my Aldermen, thank y'all for being cooperative. What we're trying to do in the park system is to work for the future. Like I said about Q, we're not misusing, mishandling anything. But I'm here tonight to tell you, we're left alone. If we can do this, we can come out with groups, we can do different things. Yeah, we can. We can combat that by doing different things. But we still gotta have that contribution. Look deep into your pockets. I'm not begging, but look deep into your pockets and try to just make something better. And let's see, if we can come together, we have a good, we have a good crew. I like to say that, we do. As a, at the park, we have a good crew. We really do. And we ask Commissioners, I'll talk, you know, ask Commissioners. I've been there. I know what it is to go through electricity is like this. At my house, it's up in the sky. You know, it's high. And we gotta, you know, put that in to the motions that we need. It's not that we're begging, but it's what we need. We gotta go back and restructure. I would just like to say, if it's all right, let's do it. However, thank y'all for the comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac.
Mike Williams and Alderman Walker, Board floor. One thing that I've been interested in with parks and rug, actually began about 1977 when we started the soccer program here. About five of us individuals got it moving. And at that time, my kids paid $3 to play soccer for a season. Seasons were different. We didn't use lights because there were no lights to be used. One thing I haven't heard, and this is interesting in view of our friends over in Columbus and Lowndes County, they seem to cooperate on very few things. They do seem to cooperate on their park system there to the tune of about $5 million, of which a sizable sum came from county. To our Commissioners and to the staff, I wonder if we have had any kind of census on the use of our parks? How many people use those parks are residents of the county? How do we know? Have we done a census? If we haven't, why don't we invite a few MBA students at the City State and a few people in landscape architecture and other areas to volunteer to do a project, to do a census? And if those numbers are what I think they are, it's time to go to the county supervisor and say, okay, guys, it's time to contribute your share to this park because you're getting X amount of use of our property. We gotta do it, folks. They're getting a free ride unless you do it.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Further citizen comments? Any further citizen comments in the first hearing on revisions to the Parks Ordinance? Any further citizen comments? All right, seeing none, we'll hear any concluding comments by the members of the Board? Are there any concluding comments by the members of the Board? All right, seeing none, that will conclude this, the first public hearing on the Amendment to Parks Ordinance. And the next matter that you have before you is the discussion and consideration of a $100,000 matching share to provide a grant for a westbound gateway air service at Golden Triangle Regional Airport. We have Mike Haynesy, the Director of the Airport here, and also see a Board member, Frank Childs, who is one of your appointees to the Golden Triangle Regional Airport. I will make a few introductory comments and then I'll let Mike explain the grant in further detail. This is an excellent, excellent opportunity for us. And really, in today's times of regional airports, at least around this state, this is a very unique and special opportunity for us because the trend of regional airports around the state is they are losing their major air carriers, which is a very big deal because, of course, that is how you fly around the country. Now, here, of course, we have one commercial air carrier, and that's SAFE, provides, Delta provides flights to Atlanta. But the airport thinks there is a strong possibility that we can get westbound service. Where that is significant is while you can certainly fly west from GTR right now, you have to fly east to Atlanta and then make the western trip wherever your destination is. And for anybody that's ever tried that before, most of the time, what you find is it's more efficient to go to Jackson, Memphis, or Birmingham and take a direct flight. So from a consumer standpoint, it offers much better opportunities for our citizens that use Golden Triangle Regional, which is our air service. From an economic development standpoint, it is critical to have air service into a community. It is even more critical when you are a geographically isolated area such as the Golden Triangle. We are not in close enough proximity to a major metro where we can depend on that air service as the package that we would offer a potential industry looking at to locate in the area. Now, those industries in particular have, needs to be able to fly all over the country and world. So to get comprehensive access across the United States is a very big deal. Now, why are we being asked for $100,000? We are being asked for $100,000 because we, along with our other sister cities and counties throughout the Golden Triangle, are how the airport is funded. The City of Columbus, Lowndes County, Starkville, Octavia County, West Point, Clay County, all band together to build the airport over 40 years ago. And from time to time, when the airport needs an improvement, the responsibility is ours as the partners that fund the airport to do so. So the request is being made for us, for our 20% share to fund $100,000 to hopefully get westbound service. Of course, if we are unsuccessful in getting westbound service, we will not owe $100,000. And there is a chance that we actually would not have to pay the full $100,000 because it is dependent on how the airline performs once it gets here. So we need to be committed to paying $100,000. But we also would have an opportunity, perhaps, not to have to pay a full $100,000. Now, final question is, how would we fund $100,000? And there are, of course, perhaps infinite ways you could choose to fund $100,000. The recommendation I would make, and I've conferred with Budget Chair, I think he agrees with me on this one, is we are retiring debt from the incentives package that built Cytel. And that's going to leave us with approximately $100,000 in next year's budget, which is when this will be required to be paid, that we are no longer responsible for. So that makes a neat and clean avenue to pay $100,000 for something that we weren't expecting to have to pay $100,000 for. With that, Mr. Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Things are going great at the airport. They are. Our employments, our load factors are up. The parking lot's always full and that's good news for us. And it's a function of the industry that's coming to this area. 15% of our travelers are international travelers. And that's because of companies such as Airbus, such as even Pacar and the steel mill, now SDI. We have a limitation though. And as the Mayor pointed out, with Delta providing our only service at this time through Atlanta, we're limited as far as our westbound options. And we are losing a lot of people, as he mentioned, who drive to a more convenient way of doing things. Last November, it was announced that GTR is one of 16 airports in the country that received a grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation. And in our case, it was for $750,000 to help attract additional air service. One of the conditions for that grant, though, was a $500,000 community match to be spread, as the Mayor mentioned, amongst the six community sponsors of the airport. In addition, the airport is adding $200,000 in incentive for waiving the landing fees and rentals in addition to $50,000 of marketing money for a new service, which comes up for a $1.5 million incentive for an airline to provide westbound service. Specifically, we're targeting the Dallas market and connecting with American Airlines. And that's public knowledge in the, in the grant. The way this grant would work is for one year only, the first year of service, we would, it's called a revenue guarantee. We would guarantee that the airline would bring in or would be able to raise a certain level of revenue, which would be their cost plus an agreed-upon percentage of profit. And if the airline falls short in any one of the quarters after they start service, then 60% of that shortage would be covered by the U.S. Department of Transportation grant, 40% by the community match, once again, spread out. So for example, if they fell $100,000 short, $60,000 would come from DOT, $40,000 from the sponsors, and Starkville's portion of that would be $10,000. And this would be done quarterly. This was done six years ago. And when we started Memphis service, we, I was in front of each of the bodies, just like I am now. And we had a $650,000 revenue guarantee, and we used $234,000 of it. We expect this, and that's because the airline made money. We expect the same type of results this time because the airlines have cut back so much that they're not gonna come here if they're gonna lose money. I don't have to convince them they're gonna make money. I have to convince them they're gonna make more money here than they will in DuBois, Pennsylvania, or Lafayette, Louisiana, all these places that want their service too. And so the only way we are going to be able to get their attention is to offer incentives. But they're very limited incentives, short-term. Get them started up. And like I said, they will not be coming here if they're not gonna be staying long-term, which is why we have the proposal in front of you to support this. It's not gonna be an escrow amount. It's just a reimbursable amount paid each quarter throughout the first year of service. The earliest this would take effect is, as the Mayor mentioned, next fiscal year. So this is not an out-of-cycle budget request. And we will know partway through the fiscal year, by the second quarter, we'll know how they're doing. And you'll have a good idea for continuing your budget on whether there will be that excess money left over and allow you to free that up. Are there any questions?
Alderman Maynard.
So as I read the grant, understand that all of the different communities, Lowndes County, City of Columbus, Clay County, City of West Point, Octavia County, City of Starkville.
Yes, sir.
It's either all in or none.
Yes, the way the resolution is written, it is a all or nothing. It would be unfair, for example, if one of the other communities chose not to do it for Starkville to carry their load. So it's an all or nothing.
Have you been to any of the other communities at this point?
We've been to three of them so far. City of West Point, Lowndes County, and Octavia County tonight, they've approved it. We'll be at City of West Point, or, sorry, Clay County on Thursday. And I would've been at Columbus today, but you guys were meeting, y'all were meeting too. So we'll be February 30 in Columbus. Indications from all those communities is very positive.
I'm very excited about this, having driven to Memphis three times last semester to fly west. It would be certainly a nice option. As I've talked to other citizens, I think everybody agrees. It's disheartening to fly to Atlanta, wait for an hour and a half, get on a plane, and look down and see your house. It's like back across it again.
Totally agree.
And this, as I understand, this is one-time money.
That's right.
It won't come back to ask for.
First-year service only. And that's, aside from that, that's just the way that they will do business. It's also a stipulation within the grant.
And this would start?
It'll start, we don't, we're, in order to get into serious negotiations with the airlines, we first have to have our incentives approved. So the grant is there, but it involves the match. I can't sign the grant until I get all six communities to pledge the matching funds. And then we'll get serious with it. The earliest it would start, though, is, the earliest the payment would start is next fiscal year because it takes normally six months after we start negotiations to even start service. So that would mean the earliest service would be late summer.
First payment wouldn't be due till October.
October, November at the earliest. Yes, sir.
I want to make that clear.
Alderman Walker. I just wanna confirm what you said earlier. You say that 15% of all traffic that comes through the airport now is international travel, primarily to the businesses located in the Golden Triangle area?
And Mississippi State.
And Mississippi State.
Yes.
I think for many of the things that the Mayor and Alderman Maynard said, we've heard a number of things tonight. We saw the presentation from Habitat for Humanity that shows that roughly a third of the citizens in our county and in our city are below the poverty line. Economic development is a pretty wide-ranging thing. And it means a lot of different things to a lot of different people. Having a regional airport that's successful is absolutely a critical component for the Golden Triangle area. Starkville Public Schools are fantastic. They're one of the best public schools in our state. However, the state of Mississippi routinely finishes last in education. If we want to help pull those people out of poverty, if we want to have a healthier community, we have to have more people. We have to have more people, and they have to have access to better jobs. We're about to ask the taxpayers of this town to fund a $5 million bond for an innovative district that's gonna be right out here off of Highway 182. I'm for that. I'm for that. I think it gives us the best chance to have meaningful industry come to our town. And so, looking at it like this, where we are, the cards are stacked against us, not just in Starkville, but in our state. You've heard people on both sides, the cards are stacked against us. The only way to pull ourselves up is to have more people and to have real economic development. And the only way you do that is you cast a real wide net and say, whoever you are, we need you, come to live in our county, come live in our town, and help make it better. That's the only way we pull those people up by the bootstraps and make our community better. So, with that being said, one-time money, $100,000, is a healthy investment, but it's an investment that gives us a better chance to make the deck a little bit better stacked in our favor. And I wish we'd make more decisions that are going to help the long-term economic outlook and hopefully provide a bridge to make our community better. There's always going to be issues that we don't agree on, and that's fair. That's how democracy is supposed to work. But this decision should be a relatively easy one. What this means for the taxpayers is that we're taking this money, we're taking a risk. Not all of you are going to fly west, but it may impact our community in a bigger way. What it may also mean is that your road might not get repaved next year, or your drainage structure might not get repaved this year. And as much as I want those things to happen in your neighborhood, I see this as a risk worth taking for the larger community. And sometimes, you have to take a step out of what may be your personal belief or your personal conviction. You have to look, what is in the long-term best interest of the community at large, when so many cards are stacked against us, just by in the fact of where you were born or where you choose to live? And this is an example, to me, of something that can help change in just a little way over time to make our community a better place and more economically prospers. So, thank you.
Further discussion? We currently have no motion pending.
Make the motion so moved.
Motion has been made by Alderman Walker to approve of a $100,000 matching share to provide a grant for westbound gateway air service at Golden Triangle Regional Airport as presented. Alderman Walker, is that your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second? Motion's been seconded by Alderman Little, Alderman Walker. Do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Discussion? Any discussion?
Let me say this, Mr. Mayor. On January the 5th, in this room, I sat before the department heads with the budget chair as well as our vice mayor. And we were on our department heads about spending. And while certainly I do recognize the economic impact for this, but for me, right now, the timing is all wrong. We have capital improvement plans, projects that need to be addressed, drainage issues in all of our wards. Just last week, I saw in the newspaper where a gentleman wrote in about the potholes down south of Montgomery. We're in the process of possibly acquiring potential property for our city. And last, something that is dear to me, our employees' pay raises. They haven't received any pay raises. Again, I understand that this is warranted, but we've got some -- for me, it's called not taking care of your own home and wanting to take care of someone else's home. But again, I understand the economic impact of it. Mr. Haney, thank you for your email. I yield the floor, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please answer yea, nay, or abstain as the city clerk or as the chief administrative officer calls your name on Alderman Walker's motion.
Alderman Carr.
Yea.
Alderman Wynn.
Nay.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Maynard.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
By a vote of five in favor with two against, this measure passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and thank you for continued support.
The next matters before you are the considerations of the overrides prior to opening the floor for discussions. I'm going to make some comments of my own. I am a United Methodist. Now, that means I believe in infant baptism. I was baptized as an infant myself. My children were baptized as infants. I believe strongly in the concept of free will. And when I find myself in a spiritual dilemma, it is natural sometimes for me to start working through the four legs of the Westland Quadrilateral. For me personally, there is nothing in my life that comes even close to being as important as my faith. For my family, nothing is as important as our faith is to us. Now, those are strongly held convictions of mine. I would imagine, of this entire room tonight, everybody, perhaps the vast majority of you, disagree with at least one of my strongly held convictions. There's probably many of you that disagree with several of my strongly held convictions. And some of you disagree with all of my strongly held convictions. I don't have a death. Now, they are deeply important to me. But it is also important to me that you have the right to disagree with my deeply held convictions. You see, I believe that the government has done one thing and one thing only for my faith, and it's very, very important. And that is allow me to freely pursue it on my own. And just telling you how much that I value free will, you understand that is a very important tenet of my faith. It's important to me as a Christian and in my own faith. It's important to me as an American because I respect the deeply held convictions of And I believe the biggest threat to my faith and the faith of others is when the government begins to dictate what our faiths should be. So, that is a fundamental principle of who we are as an American people. And for me, as a Christian, it is a fundamental principle that is very important to me. Now, the government wields an awesome amount of power. Government has the ability to take your freedom away from you. Government has the ability to tell you how to use your property. Government has very invasive powers. And with those powers comes one very, very important fundamental responsibility. And it's one that we appreciate in this country. It's one that we honor in this country. Indeed, it is one that we have enshrined in our constitution in this country. And that is that government should treat all people equally, fairly, justly, in the laws that it makes, recognizing that we are all different. Even those of us who are most alike are going to disagree on some things from time to time. Government has a responsibility by virtue of wielding the power to making the rules -- of making the rules for all of us, to treat all of us fairly, with dignity, equally, and justly. And that's what this is all about. I understand that convictions that have been expressed tonight on this issue are very, very different. It's important to remember what we are discussing. We are discussing a nondiscrimination resolution. It did not say anything about anybody's religious convictions. In fact, the only thing that it said about religion was it reaffirmed this governing body's commitment that it has made before not to discriminate against anyone on the basis of their religious beliefs. Now, what has brought us to this point is that, for the first time anywhere in Mississippi, now there are eight additional cities that have done it, it recognized that it was wrong to discriminate against people because of their LGBT status. It was wrong to mistreat somebody because they're gay. Now, I don't think that's anything that's in conflict with anything that I've heard tonight, frankly. I did hear disagreements over convictions, but I'm going to read you some examples of what the mistreatment of somebody because they're gay looks like. And I would venture to say, I don't think there's a soul in this room that wouldn't say, "This is wrong." These are documented examples of LGBT discrimination that have occurred in Mississippi. The first involves a man named David from Nettleton, Mississippi. David is a 22-year-old gay man who came out to classmates in his community when he was in high school. He reported having been bullied in school and physically abused by his classmates. On one particular day, several male students took him to the high school football field, and each one urinated on him while they hurled insults. Currently, he is out of work and living with his parents. He reports that the reason he has -- the reason he has been given for his not being suitable for employment is his sexual orientation. Andre Cooley from Forest County. Andre grew up in foster care, and he wanted to give back, so he became a Forest County Juvenile Corrections Officer. He hid his sexual orientation for fear of being fired because he was gay. He was a victim in a domestic disturbance call to the police. The call led his employers to find -- it led to his employers finding out that he was gay. Three days later, he was fired. Destin Holmes is from Moss Point. Destin is now 16. She was in middle school when a teacher divided the class into two groups, boys versus girls, for a quiz game. The teacher told Destin, an out lesbian who dresses in baggy sweatshirts and track pants, to sit in the center of the class because she was neither male nor female. Literally, there was girls on this half and boys on this half, and I was in the middle, she said. Instead of participating and getting my grade for the day, I laid my head down and cried. Her grandmother, Jennifer Holmes, age 55, said Destin was essentially kicked out of school because she didn't fit into the administration's idea of what it means to be a girl. The school superintendent told me, if she was going to dress like a boy, then she needed to fight like a boy, take it like a boy, Jennifer Holmes said. I would venture to say, there's not a soul at this table or in this room that would do anything but say acts such as those are wrong. And that is all you did with a resolution that you passed a year ago. Now, that's not a statement that you had to make, but you made it. And that is extremely significant now because the act that you have made is you have affirmatively repealed it. That means you are affirmatively stating that you no longer believe discrimination of this kind is wrong. And I know each and every one of you, I don't think that's who you are. I know that's not who we are as a community. And I don't know what's going to happen tonight. There is a strong probability that I'm going to be overridden, but the heartbeat of this community will go on, and I do believe that we grew tonight in that discussion. I believe we'll continue to grow, and whatever happens at this table, I believe we'll continue to be the community that I know we are. Discussion? You may.
I find it ironic that on the day after Martin Luther King Jr. Day that we're debating this, I heard a lot about equal rights for all yesterday in the events that I attended. Two weeks ago, in executive session, as we were discussing this, I told the group sitting at this table that 36 states recognized gay marriage. In fact, the day before, Florida had become the 36th state. I told this group that today, two weeks ago today, three other states were presenting in front of the circuit court, and that on all likelihood, the Supreme Court would probably take this up. I suggested to this group that we wait until September, when we're negotiating next year's insurance policy, to even discuss this at all because then we would have all the facts in front of us. But we moved ahead anyway. Friday, four days ago, the Supreme Court said, "We're going to take this up this year and discuss it." So, then I thought now about legacy. Where does that leave us? You know, if you ask any person in this room that's probably over 40, what's the first thing that comes to your mind when you say Ross Barnett? You're going to think of him standing in the Lyceum, blocking the entrance of James Meredith to the University of Mississippi. If I ask you in this room, what's the first thing you think of when I say George Wallace? You're probably going to say segregation today, segregation tomorrow, segregation forever as he blocked Vivian Malone and James Hood from the University of Alabama. The interesting thing is, then, people were arguing with the Bible as well. They were using Ezra, Nehemiah, Jeremiah. Keep your race pure. Don't intermingle. Don't intermarry, certainly. We can't have that. And the sad thing is, is the people that were making that argument thought they were right. And they thought they were right with God, much like the arguments that are here tonight. The Supreme Court decided the issue then. The Supreme Court is going to decide this issue now. So, our only decision tonight is, where are we going to land from a historical perspective? What is the legacy that we're going to leave? That's all I got.
Mr. Mayor, may I be recognized?
Alderman Wynn.
I have a motion. Move pursuant to Mississippi Code, Section 21-3-15, to override the mayor's veto dated January 8, 2015, related to the Starkville Board of Aldermen's repeal on January 6, 2015, of the resolution supporting equality, which shall continue to have no further force and effect. Have it reduced to writing, and I'll pass it down.
Please do.
All right. Motion has been read, and it's been reduced to writing without objection. I will not ask for it to be reread. Seeing none, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Perkins. Alderman Wynn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, I do not.
Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Walker.
To echo a lot of what the mayor and Alderman Maynard had to say, I think it's great that we had the turnout that we had tonight for people speaking on both sides of the issue. I think that's very important. And there are going to be people that are undoubtedly going to be disappointed, from one way or the other disappointed in how your Alderman votes, disappointed in the outcome of what the ultimate vote is. And that's fair. That's how this process works. These are big decisions, and that's why we get paid the big bucks to make them. It does come down to who you are and who do you think you want to be. I believe that everyone should be treated equally. I believe that's the best thing for our community. That doesn't mean that I can't agree to disagree. I think that's fine. I think the thing that is probably the most pertinent argument that we heard tonight about this issue is the process. It is absolutely fair that you question the process for why this was done in executive session behind closed doors. Because it was brought up as potential litigation? Because it was brought up as potential litigation, we want to talk about facts, that's a fabrication. I believe that that's a fabrication. I asked that question in executive session, where who is the potential litigation? Who is that? There was no answer for that question, because they couldn't give an answer, I believe, because I don't believe it was true. And so if we want to have this discussion, it should be right here in front of all you like we're doing tonight, and then you vote, and you live with it. But you don't hide in executive session for something that doesn't. Is a stretch at best to meet the requirement of what the state says. It's a stretch. You do it right here. We ran on, I ran on transparency. It was one of the things that I talked to all you people in Ward 4 that said, "You're not always going to like the decision that I'm going to make, but you're going to know where I stand before we go, and we're going to know what the issue is, and we're going to discuss it openly." Unfortunately, we're doing this after the fact, after we had had real discussion on it previously, which I thought was instructive. I think that process absolutely is open to interpretation and to be questioned. So wherever we land from here, at least we did it right here in the open, and that's how government should work. That's how city government should work, in front of the people and by the people for them.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Carver.
Well, I guess the gentleman asked me, the National Guardman, what I was doing. If you come to more meetings, I take notes, and I call them talking points. That's what I do. I think Ms. Feig taught me that years ago, take notes. You know, that was a good question. As far as, I found out about it last meeting, and it was, should we go in executive session? We were there to discuss it. And is there potential litigation? And I think anybody said, "Who in here would like to sue over this?" I asked that. Somebody in here, as always, I mean, our city attorney has said there could be potential litigation over this, and that's a fact, in my opinion. I'm responsible for my own actions, and all the decisions I make are based on my moral compass. And secondly, unless it interferes with my religious beliefs, I vote with the majority of my constituents. In Ward 1, I would say overwhelmingly, I get nothing but positive comments on this. I got stopped at a red light yesterday. I got nervous about that, and I had a guy roll down his window and say, "I appreciate you doing what you're doing." Everywhere I go, overwhelmingly. As far as being on national news, I heard that too. I'm on the other side of the fight, so I've got people from all over the country calling me, texting me, emailing me, telling me, "Thank you for what I'm doing." From the start, I never did think it was an LGBT issue, and I've said that from the start, and this is not the first time we've talked about that. I think it was made into that. I think, and I don't want to, you know, I think you and I have publicly gone after this. I believe that we weren't completely told the whole truth the very first time we voted on both of these. I think the mayor would have known how I stand. I haven't changed my opinion the whole time. I think if you know me, you know how I stand on the issue. So again, I thank all of my constituents in Ward 1 who called me, and I appreciate both sides who called me. I am only one vote in one small town. It may be a time when the nation's changing. It may not be, but at the end of the day, I have this vote, and I can use it the way that, you know, I see fit. And you want to talk about discrimination, is I've got people in here telling me the tweets that are going out about me. Does anybody here have a fake Twitter account about them, praying? I do. I've been discriminated against, and I mean, you know, and you sort of talk about that is, I'm living it right now. You know, and, you know, the tweets that are going out right now, people are telling me about what people say about me. It never has bothered me. It never has. And I looked at it one day for about two seconds, and it was one of those that you laugh away and never thought about it again, and that's a fact. Now, well, I won't even get into that. But I'll say, and lastly, I end on this, is I definitely stand the way I vote. I stand with it. I always have. I don't think I've ever been wishy-washy on this, and you know who I am. Another note for the guy, it's amazing through all this, at the end of the day, Jesus Christ became the center of this whole conversation, his teachings and things like that. And the last thing is the WWJD bracelet. Does anybody remember, you know, and my moral compass says, y'all remember the bracelet that came out? What would Jesus do? And what would Jesus do in this situation? Would he contradict his own teachings on this vote? I don't think so. I think that a lot of things have been said and skewed on the Bible and quotes. We've got people that, six months ago, claiming to be an atheist quoting the Bible. We've got lots of scripture that was misquoted and picked and chosen different parts to use that they want to use, and that can be done. That can be done. That's the right, but what would he do? Would he contradict his own teachings? I mean, you can't go and change God's word, and that's, you know, that's the way I was raised. I was raised in a Christian household that believed that marriage is between a man and a woman. Who in here has a mother and a father? Anybody can, who in here doesn't have a mother and a father that made you? And we talk a lot about sustainability. That's the buzzword for this decade. Well, that's, if you want to make this world sustain itself, is you have to have a mother and a father for procreation of the next generation. But that's how I felt. Y'all know how I felt from the start. I'm sure there'll be lots of discrimination against me for the way I feel, but that's how I was raised. And I appreciate my parents, I appreciate my grandparents and the things that they've instilled in me. Thank you.
Any further discussions? Alderman Little.
I'd like to thank everybody for the comments that were made tonight on both sides. I think it was healthy. Reminds me, similar to the conversations that were had back in September, on the 23rd, some of the same points were made. And while we were at that meeting, we discussed the plus-one insurance issue at length, and my concerns at that time were the potential for fraud and collusion, and someone mentioned you could add a sick parent. Well, heck, if you add a sick parent, that's adverse selection and would impact us. We are self-insured, and would impact us financially, would create negative experience on our rating potentially for the reinsurance that we carry. All that's intertwined, so how anybody consider and say that does not impact you financially is incorrect. Take the biblical portion out of it. Look at it from a purely business standpoint. I clearly conveyed my position at that time, and I was somewhat surprised a couple weeks ago when it came back up. Two of my colleagues brought the matter forward, and a vote was required. I voted, just like I did in September. My vote remains unchanged. It's evident that with the veto, that the mayor holds these issues very close to his heart, and that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. As controversial as these issues have come, may be the sum, my position again remains unchanged. I don't believe that we, as Aldermen, were elected to help any grassroots efforts, secure any rights or privileges which may or may not be provided by our federal or state government. From the calls and texts and emails that I've also received, and just bumping into people around the town, have been nothing but positive. A lot of these businessmen, various folks around town, people you go to church with, people you see in the gym, that don't want to come out, come forward, they may impact their business. I don't know why they don't, but they are the silent majority. And by far, overwhelmingly, the support that I've gotten over the last couple of weeks, stay the course, stay strong, we're praying for it, it's just in passing. People I don't even know, it's just been overwhelming. And back to what we were sent here for. It wasn't to address these social issues. That was basically, I heard the term earlier, the self-inflicted gunshot wound with the board on this, tackling these issues. We were sent here to address the potholes, the poor drainage situations in many of the neighborhoods, and things like that. Trash pickup, economic development, not the social issues. That's not what we're here to tend to. In my opinion, these issues have already drained too much time from this board. We have a myriad of other pressing issues that need to be addressed, which is disappointing. We, as a board, cannot legislate morals, values, reasoning, or understanding. I believe that we should follow our oath of office, which states that we, Mr. Mayor, will faithfully support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Mississippi and obey the laws thereof. So until the Supreme Court or the state or federal legislatures address this matter, I'm going to vote as I did previously.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please answer yea, nay, or abstain, as the chief administrative officer calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Wynn.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Nay.
Alderman Maynard.
Nay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Five-two.
By a vote of five in favor with two against, the veto is overridden. The next matter you have before you is discussion and consideration of overriding the mayor's veto related to rescension of plus-one insurance coverage.
May I be recognized?
Hold on, I'm going to make a few comments before opening the floor. And that is just to say, with this matter, you are taking the opportunity to purchase insurance through the city's insurance plan away from some of your employees. Now, the action that you made in adopting this range of coverage options was not to say that you approved of someone's household that was in a domestic partnership. It was to offer an opportunity for someone in a domestic partnership to cover loved ones, whether it be an adult or children. And what you are now doing, because you presumably disapprove of how someone has chosen to organize their household, is you are taking the opportunity for them to have insurance coverage for their loved ones away from them, and I believe it's in defense. Alderman Perkins.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I move pursuant to Mississippi Code, Section 21-3-15, to override the mayor's veto dated January 8, 2015, related to the Starkville Board of Aldermen's amendment on January 6, 2015, of the employee plus-one adult coverage provision under the city's medical insurance benefit plan to include coverage only for legally married spouses as recognized by the State of Mississippi. I will pass this. Motion down, has been reduced to writing.
All right. Motion has been made and reduced to writing, as it has been read and reduced to writing. I will not ask for it to be reread without objection. Seeing no objection, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Perkins, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, sir.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. We'll do this by roll call. Please answer yea, nay, or abstain, as the chief administrative officer calls your name.
I've gone Ward 1 through Ward 7 twice. As Alderman Carver routinely asks to go the other way, we'll start with 7 and work our way back this round. Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Maynard.
Nay.
Alderman Walker.
Nay.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Wynn.
Yea.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Five-two, nay.
By a vote of five in favor with two against, veto is overridden. The next matter that you have before you is discussion and consideration of a tap grant application. Well, you've only got a couple things.
Let's keep rolling.
All right. Mr. Kemp.
He's in the other room there. I'm prepared to speak on the matter.
All right. Mr. Adams, would you like to present the tap grant proposal?
Bless his soul.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Alderman, do you mind if I carry on?
Yes, please.
This is a matter, I apologize for the late nature of this, we have two active transportation alternatives program grants already in the hopper. We did not, we did not think that we would be eligible for a third, and had been given some guidance that we would not. However, DOT recently moved the Safe Routes to School program under transportation alternatives. And so with that, it is believed, come on up there, it is believed that we have a strong application that DOT would consider. A local engineering consulting firm has put together what we believe is a strong application that focuses on all of the indicators for this type of program, most notably connectivity to recent infrastructure improvements, low to moderate income, housing. This is, and so we, Everett's team has done a great job of working with the consultant to get an application together quickly. It is ready to submit if you all approve this tonight, but the matter that we're bringing forward is a requirement of the program, that they require that the board speak proactively in favor of submitting the application. The application does not obligate this body to any further action. Even if we were awarded, you have an opportunity to decline the grant, to choose not to move forward, but we believe that this is, this award will be in excess of $1 million if we are successful, and so we felt we would be remiss if we did not bring it forward tonight.
Discussion.
Mr. Kemp, thank you so much for all of the work that you've done to get us to this point to apply for. Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, I have a motion that I want to make. Move approval of authorizing the mayor to sign the legal and compliance certification for a transportation alternative program grant for a portion on Lewisville Street.
All right. Have you reduced that to writing?
I will tear it off for you.
Motion has been made and reduced to writing as soon as I have it. Without objection, I will not ask for it to be reread.
Second, Mayor.
Seeing none, I have a second from Alderman Perkins. Alderman Wynn, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No, I do not.
Discussion. Any discussion? Alderman Walker.
While the chief administrative officer did point out that we can always get the grant and then turn it down, which, I'm not sure we'd do that, but, Mr. Kemp, is it correct that this grant would be a 20% match? 20% local match? So if it's a $1 million or so project, we're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $250,000 that we're going to have to come up with. When would we anticipate, what fiscal year would we need that money for? When will this grant be awarded, and at what point will we looking to have to have those funds?
To the point on the $1 million, we're still running cost estimates on it, so that figure could go down. It could be somewhere in the $700,000 total project cost range. So, again, it is very much, applications are due at the end of this month. I would anticipate awards being announced within the next couple of months. One of the reasons why this particular project was chosen is because there would be no right-of-way acquisition since it's along an existing old MDOT highway. We don't anticipate any environmental issues, so it would be about the quickest type MDOT project we can get. I would anticipate you're looking at a minimum of nine to 12 months of design permitting and probably construction, another six months after that, so 18 months most.
So potentially in next fiscal year.
That's a very long one.
Late fiscal year, so it would probably need to be allocated or planned for in the next fiscal budget, and certainly the one following that. Is that the sort of timeline that I'm hearing? We seem to have a lot of things in the hopper. I'm going to go buy a building. We're going to spend three times too much for a ditch. I've heard somebody say before, like we're riding down Main Street and throwing money out the top of the roof. I'm not sure how we do it all. I think we have to prioritize a little bit. And if I were prioritizing, I would say that this project is probably more suitable than to going and buying Cadence Building, because this is going to be something that's going to have long-term lasting effect on the folks all the way down. I'm not sure how we do it all, but I'm not on the Budget and Audit Committee, so I'm going to vote for this. Let's do it.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman Maynard.
I am on the Budget and Audit Committee, and I'm going to vote for this, and I agree with you that we need to prioritize the things that we're going to do.
Any further discussion? Just as a reminder, I did bring in a consultant and offer the opportunity to begin to prioritize things that we wanted to fund, and I'm still waiting for somebody to take me up on that. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. The next matter you have before you is a request for approval of the City of Starkville Claims Docket. Motion has been made by Alderman Carver to approve of the City of Starkville Claims Docket for all departments, including the Electric Department, as of January 16, 2015, for fiscal year ending September 30, 2015. Alderman Carver, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Carver, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
By a vote of six in favor with one against, this measure passes. The next matter that you have before you is a request for authorization for approval of promotions in the Fire Department to fill vacant positions. Discussion.
So good.
Motion is...
Chief, let's, hold on. She just got in the room.
All right. All right, motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Alderman Walker, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
All right, chief, is there anything you wish to say in regard to the promotions?
Yes, Mayor, the, the, that's obviously the first, the new system and it went right in with the waters.
Alderman Little.
You're, the guys all that passed here that are on the standby waiting list, I guess you call it, is that an in-house list? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is not going to be part of this board action. We're only promoting those folks that are up for actual promoting. We're not approving this list. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that an in-house list just for the departmental purposes?
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Mayor, just take the motion back after, after the discussion. Just, what's the motion?
The motion from Alderman Walker was to authorize the approval of promotions in the fire department to fill vacant positions as presented. And of course, as presented refers to the packet summary that you have in your packet.
Okay, now, just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, the motion was to, for the promotions, but they're only, if we're going to follow the word of the motion, there are only five promotions there in the packet. And the motion did not include anything else.
Yeah, that, that's correct. The motion includes what's in the package. The city attorney's pulling the document for me now.
Mayor, may I recognize?
You may.
Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir.
I think if, if, of what the mayor is saying, all due respect to the chair, if he wants that included, that's going to be in the motion. You know, no particular individual at this table can incorporate anything in a motion. Obviously, it's included in the motion. The motion, the wording of the motion is, is that, that the promotions be approved as presented in the package. So if you look at that letter closely, lawyer, there are only five names for promotions. And of course, now, the motion as worded does nothing else. Now, if they want to do something different as in a staff summary, then the wording of the motion has to be changed. Am I correct, lawyer?
Yeah, I will hand this to the mayor so he can make the motion with more specific clarity.
Okay, but am I correct, though?
You are.
Okay, just make sure.
Yeah, I mean, and that's, that's what the motion is, is that it approves the promotions of, of those five individuals.
Okay, all right, well, we're good.
And now Alderman Walker, did you intend to make a different motion?
Well, I'm not, chief, are we looking for all of that list? Is that the, the permanent list? Are we looking for those, to make those five promotions at this time?
We're making the five promotions and also approving promotional lists.
So you would like the promotional list approved?
As stated in the motion.
Okay. Would someone amend the motion?
I'll, for a friendly amendment to include the list as stated.
All right, without objection, Alderman Maynard has offered the, offered the following amendment of the motion, to change the motion to, motion to approve of the promotions of the following employees at the fire department with 10% promotional, with promotional increases of 10% as presented, all subject to a six-month probationary period. Those five people are Captain Stuart Byrd to the rank of battalion chief, Lieutenant Herman D. Ware to the rank of captain, Sergeant Jerome Clark to the rank of lieutenant, firefighter Cedric Hogan to the rank of sergeant, firefighter Coleman Norman to the rank of sergeant. Also included in the motion is the approval of the departmental promotion list as presented per departmental policy. Alderman Maynard, is that your proposed amendment?
Yes, sir.
Is there any objection to the motion being amended to be that motion? Seeing no objection, the motion has been so amended. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right, show of hands, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed, by a vote of five in favor with two against, the motion passes. The next matter you have before you is the request for authorization to fill a vacant position of foreman in the new construction rehab division of public services. Discussion.
Mr. Dillon, you want to talk about this position, please? Explain this position.
We had a former congressman last week. He had this ridiculous...
Who was it? Who, who was it that was that?
Tony Johnson.
So moved, Mayor.
Motion has been made by Alderman Maynard to fill the vacant position of foreman in the new construction rehab division of public services as presented. Alderman Maynard, is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Alderman Wynn. Alderman Maynard, do you wish to speak on the merits?
No.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. All right, you have no further open session business before you. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session to determine whether there is a need for an executive session? Motion has been made by Alderman Little to go into closed session to determine whether there is a need for an executive session. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Little, do you wish to speak on the merits? Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Measure clearly passes. At this time, I'll ask the public to clear the room so the board can begin closed session deliberations. Without, without objection, I'm going to move us into a brief reset. Any objection? Objection seeing none, we'll stand in a brief reset.